We thank you all for being here for this most important issue. We will ask the clerk to read the title of the resolution.
Resolution calling for the City Council Committee on Education to hold hearings on the educational and social agenda for public schools, including charter schools, starting this September of 2015. May the first panel come up. Dr. William Height, Marjorie Neff, and Jerry Jordan.
Thank you. And we'll have opening remarks. I don't have many remarks. I only wanted to say, and those of you who have folders will see in the supplemental information, that we've included background information that we either heard last year in August 2014, or we've heard earlier. That is the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement that our President Darrell Clark led, and certainly from last year to PFT and many others, gave us great statements on Resolution 140613 on School-Based Family Services Program. Really important, and all of these things relate to today as well. We were also very pleased, and I believe we honored them, with Deputy Commissioner, Police Commissioner Kevin Bethel for the School Diversion Program. And that was very important because it allowed youngsters who otherwise would be put out of school or arrested, to be able to stay in school and have their records clear if they keep going. And wanted an unresolved resolution, Senate Bill 6. So we wanted to mention those things by way of background, because they affect us as we try to move forward. So again, we want to thank you all for being here. In the interest of time, we knew it was late, and we had a hard time, folks, getting this hearing scheduled, because our superintendent and everyone here is so busy, and then he's still talking about having to leave to go to the bank and try to deal with that. And we're gonna call on Councilman Squiller with regard to that. But we want to say thank you for the answers to questions we have. We'll make them available on the table. We asked many, many questions, and then we always get some you didn't raise, like charter schools and public schools, and when youngsters transfer, what about the money? Could they do it quarterly and look at about the money following the child? That's a big issue as well. So certainly, I'm going to open the mic to my colleagues for their remarks, and then we will turn it over to you. Councilmen's. All right. All right. We're going to open the floor to you, and then we'll ask questions, and then we'll move forward. Let me note that we have to my right, Councilman Squiller, to his right, Councilman Good, to my left, Councilman O. Thank you again.
Good afternoon. Councilwoman Blackwell, Council President Clark, and members of the City Council Education Committee, thank you for the opportunity to testify before you this afternoon. My name's Marjorie Neff, and I'm the Chair of the School Reform Commission of the School District of Philadelphia. Before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge and thank my fellow commissioners, Feather Houston, Sylvia Sims, Bill Green, and Farah Jimenez, for their work for Philadelphia's students. And Commissioner Houston is here today with us. I've spent my career in the School District of Philadelphia. I've worked as a middle school teacher at Ada Lewis Middle School, taught learning-disabled and emotionally disturbed students at Fulton Elementary School, supported a number of schools in West Philadelphia as an instructional support teacher, served as the principal of Powell Elementary School, and, most recently, as the principal of Julia R. Masterman School. Spending 38 years in the School District of Philadelphia has given me the perspective to say with certainty that the last five years of budget cuts have been devastating for our schools. I would be remiss if I didn't say that the fiscal health of the School District of Philadelphia is a primary focus of the SRC, because it impacts everything. Today, however, I'm going to take this opportunity to highlight one of the areas where I've seen positive growth: the district's partnerships that are advancing opportunities for students in Philadelphia despite our challenging fiscal reality. These partnerships do not replace the resources we desperately need, but they do allow us to make significant progress. Two weeks ago, I had the privilege of attending the opening ceremony of the Center for Advanced Manufacturing and Engineering at Ben Franklin High School. The creation of this center is an example of what can happen when government, private industry, community leaders, philanthropists, and public institutions come together in support of Philadelphia's students. Through these partnerships, the district has invested $6 million into the center, which will train students in the use of state-of-the-art manufacturing technology and techniques to prepare them for college and jobs in the career technical fields. Industry experts are part of the Occupational Advisory Committee to advise teachers and administrators in developing quality programs that create a strong link between the industry and the curriculum. The center at Ben Franklin is exemplary, but it is not unique. Across Philadelphia and Philadelphia Career and Technical Education, we are expanding and making a measurable impact. Currently, Philadelphia has 115 citywide Admit CTE programs in 30 high schools, serving 6,000 students. Last year, our students earned 3,420 industry-recognized certifications, and in 2014, the CTE students in Philadelphia had an 84 percent graduation rate. To expand these opportunities, Dr. Height has set a goal of 12,000 students in CTE programs by 2020. This impressive work would not be possible without the support of a diverse range of partners who have given their time, energy, and resources to make these opportunities happen for Philadelphia's students. I'd like to thank Councilman Heenan, the Middleton family, Dr. Height, and Dave Kipbit, who's the deputy of the School District's Office of Career and Technical Education, for their continued investment in CTE education. Second partnership I'd like to talk about is our partnership with the City of Philadelphia. The City of Philadelphia has a nationally-recognized Inspector General, Amy Carlin, whose office has saved or recovered approximately $58 million for the City of Philadelphia over the last seven years. In January, under the leadership of Commissioner Bill Green, the School Reform Commission entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Inspector General to use her skills and resources to improve and expand the district's ability to conduct investigations and strengthen the functioning of the district's offices. Under the leadership of Amy Carlin, we have put in place a partnership that will grow the investigative capacity of the district. Another city partnership is the City-District Intergovernmental Agreement. As you know, on October 7th, the School District of Philadelphia, the School Reform Commission, and Philadelphia City Council signed an intergovernmental cooperation agreement, formalizing actions to increase transparency and communication between our institutions. The agreement includes providing quarterly school manager reports to council members, seeking the input of council on the annual development of our five-year financial plan, maintaining regular meetings between the district and council's chief financial officer, and increasing the number of regular briefings held for council members and council as a whole on the work of the school district. Thank you to Council President Clark, Councilwoman Blackwell, and the council members for your support in this partnership. Guided by the School District of Philadelphia's Action Plan 3.0, and under its strategy of developing a system of excellent schools, the district's Office of Strategic Partnership is charged with ensuring that all schools are porous and open to partnerships that aid and support students to thrive. The Office of Strategic Partnership defines partners as resource bringers, organizations that provide programs and services to our schools and students at no cost to the district. The Office of Strategic Partnership is both partner-facing and school-facing, as it serves as the district's entry point for prospective partners interested in bringing resources to the schools, while also working with schools to assist them in finding partners suited to their particular needs and mission. Over the 2014-2015 school year, its first full year of operation, OSP collected information from over 300 partner programs in over 130 schools. They also work directly with dozens of schools by channeling partners to address schools' needs. The Office of Strategic Partnership is led by Vicki Ellis. Through her leadership, over the last school year, the office met with over 80 existing and prospective partners to better understand the successes and challenges of partnership work in our schools. I've only touched on the surface of partnerships that are impacting the success of our students and our schools. Others include citywide campaigns, such as the Read by Fourth Initiative. This is Philadelphia's collective impact strategy for achieving grade-level reading for every child by the time they enter fourth grade. The campaign is made up of a network of partners committed to aligning their work to four key strategies. This campaign is only one example of many citywide cross-sector collaborations working to improve outcomes for Philadelphia's children. Partners from every sector, community organizations, nonprofits, colleges, universities, businesses, and corporations, have continued to step in in support of our schools and students through services and programming, financial and in-kind donations, volunteer involvement, and more. This work would not be possible without the dedication and partnership of these entities to further the opportunities available to our young people. But before concluding, I'd like to say once more, while we are very proud of these successful partnerships, they do not replace the resources our schools desperately need. This is day 112 without a state budget. I urge the state government to come together and pass a budget with responsible revenue measures that restore cuts and provide sustainable, fair funding to Philadelphia's schools. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna try to allow a testimony to happen, if it's okay with the panel. And Councilwoman Blanche Del Reynolds Brown is also here, and Vice Chair. And then we'll ask some questions, if that's okay with everyone. All right. Thank you, Dr. Height.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Chairwoman Blackwell, members of City Council Education Committee. I'm Bill Height, Superintendent of School District of Philadelphia. I too want to thank City Council for your continued support of the school district and the children we serve, and thank you for providing the revenue when, over the last three years, revenues were being reduced from Harrisburg. I have testimony. I've submitted the testimony, so I will not go through that testimony, but I do want to make a couple of remarks, and think that these remarks are really important. I was at an event earlier today at Merrill Dobbins', and they were doing a ribbon-cutting on their new Flash Media Lab, and there are gonna be five schools who will have that new technology this year through a partnership with WHYY, sponsored by the William Penn Foundation. They will be the first five of 27 schools over the next three years that will have those technologies that allow children to do video production, and to learn about media, and to communicate in a very different way. And one of the comments that was made by one of the individuals who were talking to the children this morning, they indicated that children hear a lot of things about the School District of Philadelphia each and every day. Many of those things are not the most positive things. And one of the things that I think is important is that we constantly remind the children that those comments are not a reflection of their ability, but instead, they are a reflection of the circumstances that we face. You heard our School Reform Commissioner talk about the reductions in revenue that have been very detrimental to the school district. We have insufficient revenues in their schools. We don't have the sufficient materials and supplies needed by many of our teachers, and we don't have quite a few positions that are still very important to the day-to-day operations of their schools. However, I want to focus my comments on a couple of things that are working well, and some opportunities to celebrate the things that our teachers and students are doing in schools. Since the beginning of the school year, I've had the opportunity to visit almost 40 schools, and am very excited about the things that are taking place. I have already acknowledged that, by and large, we still have a continuing problem with having insufficient resources in the schools, but nonetheless, I do think that there are some things that we should and all can be excited about. First and foremost, our chair has already talked about the program at Cover Engineering and Science that we kicked off, and the fact that they're adding 7th and 8th grade this year to provide access to children who primarily live in that vicinity of the school is extremely important. In addition to that, we are excited about the new dental educational program at Kensington Health Sciences, the new advanced manufacturing program, as was described earlier, at Ben Franklin High School, that will provide children with access to the types of skills and abilities that they will need to participate in the workforce for all of the areas of advanced manufacturing here in the city. Four schools this year who are beginning a new process to redesign themselves. Those schools are Tilden, Chester-Auether, Cornell, and Jinx. This year, we also are excited that we were able to provide, for the first time in many years, all 9th, 10th, and 11th graders the opportunity to sit for and take the PSAT at no cost to them. And last week, 26,000 of our high school students participated in that administration. We're also excited that, as a district, overall, we've seen improved attendance. We still no longer have any persistently dangerous schools, and Philadelphia had, unfortunately, the dubious distinction of having many of the persistently dangerous schools in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, but because of the work that's happening in schools by teachers, students, administrators, families, then we have no persistently dangerous schools. We have more students who have graduated, and who have graduated, and fewer students who are dropping out of schools. Just yesterday, students from Shepherd, Howe, Julio de Burgos were able to question the mayoral candidates during a candidate forum, and their students showed spectacular knowledge about the things that are happening in and around their communities. In addition, I think that one thing that's really important, and you mentioned it, Chairwoman Blackwell, is that the work that's happening in a diversion program is changing the lives of many children who, before that program, may have had their first interaction with the justice system, for something that, in many cases, did not begin as criminal behavior. So we're very pleased with the partnership with the Philadelphia Police that then redirects what happens to, redirects those children to a resource versus introduction to the justice system. In addition, I think one thing that is important, this doesn't indicate that we don't have problems. We do have problems, and we have many problems to address in and across our school district. And this year, those problems have been well documented. But it's also important to acknowledge that we have to separate the problems from the solutions. And I remain committed to being solutions-oriented, and plan to be relentless about solving the problems and addressing the problems we have. I also think that it's really important to engage in dialogue, and dialogue is extremely important, particularly with all of the challenges that we've had to face in the school district. But we also have to get to a place where we take actions, and take actions to resolve the issues. And in addition, as the chairwoman stated, we all have to be united in our ask to Harrisburg for sufficient funding. We still have, although members of City Council have come through in a big way over the past three years, and we're very appreciative of that, we still are not receiving the funding that we need to receive from Harrisburg. And in many cases, those additional funds can address many of the problems that we're faced with. I'll close with just this, that we still have far too many students in schools that are not serving their needs, and we still have far too many students who are sitting in schools that haven't served their needs for some time. I'm willing to do what's difficult and remain committed to the students across the city. And I know that's not gonna be popular in every case, but please understand that I am taking these actions on behalf of improving the educational outcomes of all of the students we serve. So with that, Chairwoman Blackwell, members of the committee, thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to your questions.
I'm Jerry Jordan, President of the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers. Thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell, and members of City Council, for holding this hearing and providing an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts and concerns about education in Philadelphia. I want to begin by saying that this is an extremely frightening time to be an educator, a student, or a parent who relies on public education. Though City Council has been doing its part to provide our schools with the resources to provide programs and services for children, Harrisburg is once again holding Pennsylvania's schools hostage as legislators refuse to pass a budget. While partisan games continue at the state capitol, the futures of hundreds of thousands of the Commonwealth schoolchildren hang in the balance. If a budget is not passed soon, I fear school shutdowns across Pennsylvania are a real possibility, and an unacceptable possibility. That being said, not all the problems faced by our schools can be laid at the feet of the lawmakers in Harrisburg. Unfortunately, many of the challenges we're seeing in our schools this year are the result of bad decisions on the part of the school district. From the moment the district began to seek proposals to outsource the services of substitutes, I stated publicly that it was a terrible idea that would negatively impact students. The Source for Teachers has been an even bigger disaster than I anticipated. Source for Teachers promised to start the year with a 75 percent fill rate of substitutes. Two months into the school year, they have barely managed to fill at a rate of 20 percent. Failure to find substitutes for teachers and school staff absences is just a part of the problem. The larger issue is the over 200 vacancies and 20 certified nursing vacancies that have been unfilled since the beginning of the school year. Charter school spending makes up one-third of the district's already strained budget, yet the district wants to add to their deficit by converting Worcester, Huey, and Cook Schools to charter schools. The PFT called for a moratorium on new charter schools last year. We stand by that position today. We believe there is a better way to improve our schools and strengthen public education. Let's bring the community schools model to Philadelphia. Community schools bring in community partners to work with educators and parents, and provide wraparound services for students and their families. These services could include family counseling, mental health services, dental and vision clinics, and even legal assistance. In community schools, parents, educators, administrators, businesses, and others work together to determine how to support their students' needs. Community schools have had a great record of improving student achievement in Baltimore, Chicago, St. Paul, and Cincinnati, and other cities. The PFT has been actively campaigning to bring community schools to Philadelphia. Community schools are the best way to strengthen public education and stabilize neighborhoods without giving our schools away to private companies. I hope the PFT can count on the support of City Council as we work with organizations to bring this model to our school district. I appreciate council's commitment to hearing the voices of Philly's educators, parents, and schoolchildren. Thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak this afternoon.
Thank you very much. We're going to open up for questions now, and I'll ask one or two, and since our time is short, and we understand, I have a note here, it says the superintendent has to go to the bank, we will deal with this issue. But for the schools to be converted, we know some in the northwest, certainly John Worcester Elementary in Germantown, Jay Cook in Logan, Sam Huey in my district, and they're talking about Leeds Middle School closing. And when we looked at their, the information we received, thank you, Mr. Jordan, on these schools, we found out that these schools were improving, that they were basically doing better, and I've heard from two more schools in my district just today, who are really worried about closing. And I know about Huey. Huey started having a change of principals every year. You know what happens when every year or two, your principals change. So I'm concerned about schools closing, and I'm also concerned about, because we heard that with regard to other schools, that when they vote, their vote didn't count. Parents and community members should be able to vote for their school being changed or charterized. They still should have that right to decide, and I'm not so sure that's happening now. Could you comment on that?
Sure. Sure. I think you're talking about the Renaissance, Madam Chair, and at the Renaissance schools, we've made a recommendation, and now between now, I think the recommendation was made on October 1st, and the recommendation is gonna be voted on on January 21st. And at the Renaissance charter schools, they have, so number one, we have some Renaissance charter schools already. These are schools and whose charter agreements were recently renewed, and at these schools, there have been double-digit gains in math and reading performance. School climate has also improved across Renaissance, fewer serious incidents, lower percentage of students suspended, increased attendance, increased retention rates. And so the reason I'm saying all of that is because this year's process, it does not involve an up or down parent or guardian vote on whether the school should enter the Renaissance turnaround process. There will be, however, multiple engagement and matching approaches during these six, so throughout the six years that we've been doing the Renaissance, there have been multiple approaches. The voting approach was used two years ago with the schools that we, two of the schools that we talked about. That was at Munoz, Marin, and Steele. Prior to that, there was no, there were no votes on whether or not the school would become Renaissance, but instead on matching the providers. An important part of this year's process is that, for the first time ever, parents and guardians will serve on the official evaluation committee, one committee for each school that reviews the charter partner proposals for the school. This change has been implemented because of feedback received in prior years, including that the proposal review process did not seem transparent, and also because the school district wants to solicit feedback directly from parents of their children. And I think that one of the reasons we are doing this is because these three schools were, these three schools, when we look across many schools, need something to occur in an urgent fashion. And one of the things that we've seen with some of the successful Renaissance, and those Renaissance take catchment areas, they take the current boundaries, is that in a short period of time, they were able to make some pretty dramatic improvements for the schools. And those are the type of dramatic improvements that I would also like to see for these three schools, and that's why we made the recommendation. I will also add, though, that these recommendations also included a couple of new neighborhood schools. It also included the expansion of very high-performing schools and some conversions of schools, in addition to some schools that will be recommended for in-district turnaround.
Yes, we just don't understand, it seems to me, that communities have a right to all votes. I mean, we who are elected understand that quite well. And we're glad to hear about boards where people are added and community members are added, but we still believe that for the future of schools, the public and parents should have a vote. I know in Southwest, and a lot of Southwest, some of Southwest I didn't represent, but I do now, like, for example, Wilson was closed, then they closed about two parts of John Bartra, my alma mater. They closed those schools too, so it was like, then they changed one shaw, so we had a situation where on all levels, we have an already depressed area, and you have, they were hit from all sides, on all levels of education, and that doesn't seem fair to me as well. But we believe all of that, parents should have the last say, and their opinion should be considered, and they should have a right for what happens to schools, whether they become charters, or community schools, or Renaissance schools, whatever the situation may be. Thank you. Councilman Squiller?
Councilman Swilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the Renaissance school issue, is there, I guess, guidelines if we see a Renaissance school that's not performing as well, and some of the schools that were turned over previously? Is there a plan to change that back? And what is the process for that?
Yeah, so, thank you, Councilman Swilla. Yes, in fact, there are a couple of non-renewals in front of the SRC now for several of the Renaissance schools that are actually not meeting the tenants of the charter. And that, in that process, it is, those schools would be non-renewed, and then at such time, we would be considering other options, whether that school then returns to the district or another provider. And the only reason I'm saying another provider is because there was one case where one of our Renaissance schools, they were not performing, and the parents at that school selected a different provider. And so it is to consider the other options that are available and make, and make the parents a part of that process as well.
Okay, I mean, as long as we're being able to, I guess, treat the schools or grade the schools on a systematic method so that everybody's graded along equally, I think most people would understand that. I know, Ms. Duff, you had mentioned about the finances of the school district, and I know since the state budget hasn't passed, is there an immediate close of school date that you have?
Yeah, no, we do not have a close of school date yet. One of the things will depend on if, in fact, we are in the process of asking, asking the question of whether or not we are able to borrow additional monies. And that, depending on the answer to that question and how much, it will provide for us some indication of how long we will be able to operate before we will run out of money. And so we don't have a date yet, but we will know once we hear back from individuals that we have, that we have made a request to for additional loans in order to continue to operate for longer periods of time.
All right, you said additional loans. Have you borrowed money this year already?
Yes, we borrowed money this year as part of the TRAN, and that, we typically do that, have to do that every summer, because the borrow then toddles the district over until there's an appropriation from the state. But in this case, we've had to also borrow against that TRAN, because we did, it was a large amount. We borrow, we are utilizing all of that, because we have not had any appropriations from the state since July.
I understand that. We, the problem we had is before borrowing money to make payroll and to make things work, we saw where that got us. Our debt services are at $20 million a year. Borrowing conditionally now, so we borrowed, how much, 100 million? I mean, 200 million? What did we borrow so far?
No, it was, it was, this past summer, it was, it was 200 million with the ability to take out another $250 million to do that, and we've done that. We have exhausted all of that. But this is different than the previous borrow, because these are short-term, and these are based on, they, number one, the security is the, is the allocation that will come from the state. So as soon as we receive that disbursement from the state, you pay these loans off. So they're short-term borrows, not the type of 20-year borrows that are associated with the more significant debt that you're referencing.
So the 550 million that we borrowed, when we get the money from the state, we pay off the 550 plus?
Yes. Plus anything additional that we borrow. Then Fran, you want to come and talk specifically about?
So there's an interest associated with that borrowing?
No question about it. There is interest associated with that, and in this case, I'm sure Fran can give us the amounts of that.
All right, and then Fran, I guess, Ms. Burns, we're going to borrow, we're looking to go today to go borrow additional dollars, and is this just to stay open? Is that what that is?
At this, yes, this would be to stay open longer, to make payroll, to make the required payments that we have to make to pensions and to all of those other things, insurance.
And so before, before Ms. Burns speaks, so then if the state budget doesn't get for another month, you have to go back and borrow again?
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't, I think, and here's the important point, I mean, and Mr. Jordan talked about this in his comments. I mean, the important part about this, and the challenge with this now, is many districts across the state are reaching their maximum in terms of the credit that individuals will provide. Some districts have already gone out for loans and are not being approved, because they don't have the security for that. But we think that any additional borrow will put us at the absolute maximum that we will be able to have. And so then, after all of that, if there's still no budget, then we will run completely out of cash.
Good afternoon. Fran Burns, Chief Operating Officer and interim executive sponsor of finance for the school district. I'm probably going to repeat most of what you heard from Dr. Height.
You don't have to repeat it if you.
Well, I'll just clarify, just help supplement. We do issue a tax revenue anticipation note, which is just specifically in order to cover the expenses through the beginning of the year because of the different timing of cash coming in. For instance, as Dr. Height explained, the state basic education subsidy comes in in chunks every other month, and then the real estate revenue, which is the largest portion of our local revenue, comes in in March and April, February, March and April. So every year, the school district of Philadelphia issues a tax revenue anticipation note in anticipation of that revenue and pays off that full amount of the borrow within the same fiscal year. What also has happened in the past few years is the state has actually advanced the school district, some of the basic ed subsidy at the beginning of the year, so that we would have to borrow less and therefore have less borrowing costs. This year, with the state budget impasse, we issued, we had a TRAN borrow of $575 million initially, and we only drew down 300 million of that, hoping that we actually would have a state advance as we had in the past few years. Since we didn't get the state advance, because we don't have a state budget passed, we actually drew down that entire $575 million to keep the operation, you know, running and open, schools open, with the philosophy and kind of the principle along the way that we wanted to keep all schools open for all children for as long as possible during this budget What we are announcing, what we announced and are likely to push off, we have, we're going to postpone until next week, is we are asking our lenders if there is any additional borrowing capacity to continue to keep us as long as possible with all schools open, debt service paid. We have paid all of our debt service, we have covered all of our salaries, all of our personnel costs, again, for as long as possible. So what we are doing is we're actually, right now, in the process of understanding what kind of additional lending might be made available and at what cost. And so that will inform how long can we continue to go.
The 550 million that we borrowed so far, what is the debt service to that that needs to be paid back when we get a budget?
Well, it's 575 million.
575 million.
Yeah. 300 million of that is at a fixed rate, and the other 275 million is at a variable rate. So on an annualized cost, we would pay between $1 and $2 million. However, once we, what we would do, as you recognized, is when we get our revenue from the state, we would pay off that entire borrow to therefore have less of an interest cost, you know, through the whole year.
So say this continues to the end of the year, the budget, which may or may not happen, we don't know. At some point, we're going to have to close the schools, other districts are going to have to close the schools. Are we now negotiating and talking to other districts to see what they're doing? Because we have to really, you're going to have to make people feel the urgency of what's going on here. If we keep borrowing and increasing our debt services, all we're doing is allowing them to play games more in Harrisburg and continue doing what they're doing. At some point, it's enough is enough. We're wasting now maybe a million, maybe $2 million on debt services that we have to borrow, that money we could be used for our kids. So at what point, say you can't borrow any money when you go to the bank today, are we done next week?
Well, we do have an assurance for a certain amount of money, so, no, we, but what we don't have, we don't know is kind of the extent of our line of credit and what the bank's willing to do. So for that reason, we are going to have a public meeting and a hearing with an SRC action meeting once we understand the amount of borrow. Just to continue to further clarify, we actually, for the annual cost, should not incur a full $1 to $2 million, because we will only pay, we will pay off this short-term borrow as soon as we get the revenue from the state. Additionally, and while this is not a guaranteed assurance, we have, we have heard that the state may cover the cost of the interest on the additional borrow. Again, that's not an assurance, but that also is something that we're hopeful will actually occur.
Does that have to be approved by the?
It does.
All right. So are we working with other districts throughout the Commonwealth to coordinate an effort to make, make this known to our legislators?
Yes, as a matter of fact, Councilman, there are several districts, I mean, so there, what we knew, and this number is probably higher, but what we knew probably three weeks ago was that there were 25 districts already at a cash negative, in a cash negative position. And so they are also exploring the exact same things we are exploring. And because they did not do, or they didn't have such a large TRAN, they were, they don't have that type of revenue to fall back on. But we are coordinating and talking with all of our respective legislators. But I do want to make, I do want to come back to a point you made in terms of if we keep borrowing. It is also the acknowledgement that we have a workforce of 16,000 individuals and 203,000 children in schools. And so it is, one of the things we want to do is not, we don't have to not disrupt what's happening with those individuals, and it's important for us to meet payroll, it's important for us to get, have schools open for children to attend. And so that's why we're exploring these opportunities.
Oh, I think we all agree with that, but there does come a point where the cost is taking away our future ability to educate our youth. And sometimes you have to make a stand now for what's going to happen in the future. And if we allow this to continue to the end of the year and enable the borrowing to continue, which does also increase our debt service, whether it's a million or 2 million or whatever it is, it's less money we have now. And I understand, I mean, I remember I used to work for the state, when there wasn't a state budget, we didn't get paid. All those state workers put all the pressure on those legislators, and believe me, within a week, we had a budget. Now that's not happening right now. You know, as long as we can continue to make things hunky-dory, they're not going to do anything. We need to make sure that pressure's there to do it.
Yeah, I mean, and I think to your point, if in fact there's not a budget approved before the end of the year, we will not have the money to continue. And so I think that point is really important, because at some point, we will run completely out of cash, even with, even with the additional borrowing.
Thank you. I would just, I would, I know that you're trying to do it in unison, but I mean, everybody's probably afraid to act on their own, so maybe if there's five, 10, 12 districts that do it at the same time, it may be something to consider.
Yeah, and there will be, there will be quite a few districts who will do this before us, because they're in a worse cash position than we're in currently.
Thank you. Point of information, Councilman Gooden, before you speak, let me note that Maria Quinones Sanchez is here, as is Councilwoman Cindy Bass. Thank you. Councilman, point of information?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Following up one of the questions by Councilman Swilla, what borrowings, if any, are being secured for the additional sales tax revenue, and at what point do you utilize that strategy?
So the, we have, we, the, we are currently, we actually have talked to the state about a potential tax anticipation note that would be secured by the sales tax, and we, it's kind of just a current discussion.
So you do anticipate using your borrowing capacity from the sales tax revenue?
It's an option, but we haven't, we haven't gone.
Is that something that we need to approve?
No, that would not be required by an action of the city council.
Are you sure?
Yes, I'm sure.
Okay. We had a discussion with the council president before the hearing, and two things were true. One, he said that you were not considering borrowing against sales tax revenue, and two, he said that he believed at that point that you would have to come back to city council authorization as you did in the past. Can you explain for the record why you would not have to come back, because that's money otherwise would be going towards the city pension system?
No, the city port, the school district portion, $120 million that comes from the state is.
There's a split. So you get the first 120.
Right, that's correct.
And then after that, it goes toward the pension system, except for the additional money that's borrowed by the school district, that has to be paid back. And I believe that has to be authorized by the city council. And my, and my question was, are you going beyond that $120 million in terms of borrowing?
No, we are not. I'm sorry, I understood your question to be about the $120 million that we get directly from the state. So, no, we are not.
This is money that comes from the state. The issue is whether they take the portion that would go to the pension system off the top to get to the schools because of the amount of borrowing you decide to do.
We're not asking about that, right. We're not asking about that, Councilman. I mean, that's a, we were only asking about the 120.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Blonder Reynolds-Rahal.
Thank you. Could I please trouble Commissioner Duff to come back to the table? I have two questions to kick off. And on page four of Dr. Height's testimony, it states that our own priorities should also be considered as anchors for the foundation of a good education, and you state them in the following order: school safety, improved academic performance, nurses, health counselors, librarians, technology, vocational training, art, music, sports, and recess. So with the backdrop of my colleagues' questions around budget, and with the crisis we're in with regards to funding, the priority considerations, please help me understand what I think I heard, and that is a need to grow the investigative component of this school district of Philadelphia.
The MOU with the inspector general's office is to allow, we have an inspector general's office within the school district, which was not functioning in a way that we felt was working to root out any kind of financial malfeasance within the district. So through the MOU that we have with Amy Carlin, she has helped us develop a more robust organization within the constraints of the budget that we already had for that office.
So should I learn from that, that there's not an increase in that department, it's just a reconfiguration of tasks and/or staffers to address those challenges facing the school district in this area? So there's no increase in the budget in that particular department?
At this point in time, there was a recommendation from Ms. Carlin that we needed more staff, but at this point in time, we have a, through the memorandum of understanding, we're getting some of the services that we need through the city in terms of investigation.
Okay, all right. So when we get together again in the spring, provide us an update on where that, where that department is and whether or not there's an increase in staff, and if there is, why? Okay. Dr. Height, just update if you, update us if you could on technology and the technology education resources. It's encouraging to hear that, one, the first five schools of 27 are coming online. How did you arrive at the lucky 27? And, and general additional information around the technology piece?
Yes, thank you. The, so, so we started this with respect to technology last year, using, using monies and focusing on early literacy. So first and foremost, we improved the technology of everyone who was in a K through fourth grade class, and that was because of a piece of technology that allowed them to help diagnose where a child was with respect to their reading ability. There was a program called Ames Web that provided all of the teachers that were teaching those grades with additional technology. With respect to what we're doing this year, we're also trying to expand that now to, through middle school, so that we're also providing new material, because some of, some of our staff members have technologies that are 10 years or more, 10 years old or more.
Wow.
And we are.
And we are in a process of also replacing that. And we're on a path to begin replacing all of the technology throughout the district, but naturally you have to do that in a, in a structured way. We're able to use monies like E-Rate, the monies that can only be used for that purpose. There's some monies in Title I that, that address early literacy.
Really?
So we've been able to, to also use those monies as well. In addition, we have a significant number of new technologies in classrooms in, in the form of classroom mobile units. We have smart technologies that individuals are using. And then, as I indicated before, in some cases, we have children who are having devices that they can use, and they can actually take those devices home with them. And so we have increased by about 40,000 the number of new technologies that are available in schools. With respect to the
Forty thousand students? Did you say 40,000 students?
The 40,000 pieces of
Forty thousand pieces, okay.
Forty thousand pieces. I think it, I think it actually impacts a few more students than, than that, because many of these are classroom sets
Okay.
That, that schools are using. In addition, many schools, this is about the state budget again. Many schools have put on their investment list, remember we talked about that, things that principals would add if in fact we are getting that additional revenue. And technologies are a significant part of that.
Of course.
In addition to individuals who have nurses two days a week, they want those nurses to be there five days a week. In addition, there are counselors that are on there, and in many, there are individuals to help around recess and lunchtime, and, and so that schools can do socialized recess lunches, and then still some others are AP classes and those types of things. With respect to the media, the Flash Media Labs, and these are, this is video production, this is a partnership with WHYY where they send an instructor in to these schools.
Oh, okay.
The instructor works with the teachers in these schools in order to provide children with access to this, these technologies. The mater, the supplies remain at the school even after the program leaves because students then begin producing video documentaries, they understand how to be responsible consumers of media, they, there's a large portion on writing and communication. So all of those things are in place. In this case, the five schools were selected because schools actually submitted a proposal for how they would use these media labs, and then the top five and most innovative proposals were the ones that were funded this year. These will be five of, as I indicated before, 27 that will, will eventually be in schools over the next, over the next three years.
So WHYY makes the final decision about which schools are selected?
In, in partnership with the district.
Okay.
And, and so make that together after reading those proposals.
Okay, then. All right, that answers the question about how those schools were, were identified. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. As soon as we ask this round of questions, unfortunately, we're going to have to go to three minutes so that everybody here gets an opportunity to speak. We have five panels today, and we'd like everyone who signed up to get their chance. Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Quinones, and then, and then Quinones Sanchez, and then Councilman O.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Let me start out by, first of all, thanking Dr. Heit and also Commissioner Neff, and of course, Mr. Jordan, for always being accessible and providing the information that we need to be able to help as much as we possibly can with the decisions that are being made. The decisions are very, very difficult. We all have at heart the best interests of our children, and want to make sure that they are really getting the education, the quality level of education that they deserve. And so, you know, obviously, you know, Dr. Heit and I, we, we did speak about some of the changes that are expected in my district, which are Worcester School and Jay Cook. I'm very familiar, I know them both very, very well. And so one of the things, I just want to start by saying is I appreciate you coming and providing the level of detail and information that you provided, although I am greatly concerned that we put additional resources in and, you know, so quickly we're pulling out. And so it feels like, you know, we drop money in, and then we just as quickly drop ourselves out of what's happening at the school. And, you know, it doesn't leave for a whole lot of confidence that we're, you know, approaching this in a, in some sort of a systematic manner, if you know what I'm saying. But, but again, I do thank you for, you know, providing the information, and as we continue to have the dialogue and conversation and talk to the parents about what it is that they want to do, because that's what's most important, is that we, you know, have those conversations that everyone is available and at the table. And also, Mr. Jordan, thank you for the information that was provided as well. Just a couple of quick questions for you, and one is about, you know, good news for my district is the expansion of the Hill Freeman School, which is a high-performing middle school. I think they're actually converting it to a high school as well. They do a great job, a blue-ribbon school in my district. And can you talk about that expansion? Because one of my concerns is you have to qualify in to Hill Freeman. And so if we're closing Leeds and transferring those students to Hill Freeman, is that an automatic transfer? Or do they have to qualify in, or how, how is that going to work?
Yes, and at the, at the onset, it's an automatic qualify for the students in Leeds right now.
Okay.
And then the, there's also an opportunity, as we move forward, to do something similar that we're doing in other areas, and that is to expand the elementary schools that feed Leeds that are higher performing, and expand those elementary grades so that future sixth graders will remain in those elementary schools or apply to Hill Friedman. But it is, after a lot of conversations with Mr. Majewski, the principal at Hill Friedman, thought it best so that the children at Hill, at Leeds are not disrupted, that those children would also remain in the program that is Hill Friedman. And they will have the opportunity to apply to the high school if in fact they, if in fact they choose to continue.
Okay, so once they're in, they have an opportunity to apply to the high school?
Yes.
Okay. And so, and that will be effective in the next full year?
Yes.
Okay.
At the, at the Leeds building, so at the, the whole program is still at the Leeds building.
Oh, so they're not, okay, so the, the location?
Will remain the same for the children in, currently in Leeds School.
Okay. But it will be Hill Freeman at Leeds?
Hill Friedman, yes.
Okay? All right, okay, all right. And so there won't be any additional qualifying requirement so that the young people in that neighborhood have to go elsewhere, or, I just want to be clear on that.
That's correct, that's correct. With Hill, with Leeds, those children will become Hill Friedman students.
What about special education children?
Same, the same.
Same, okay, very good. Does Hill Freeman have a special ed program?
Yes, a very good one.
Fantastic, okay, very good. I know Mr. Majewski at Hill Freeman does an excellent job and has been a great principal, and, and there for a long time, so I have a lot of confidence in him and the work that he does. Another quick question, as we were talking about the finances and borrowed money, one thing that came to mind is that, you know, when we closed a whole bunch of schools a few years ago, and there was an assumption that we were going to have, not a windfall, but that there, you know, with, with the sale of the buildings, that there would be a significant amount that would come to the district. And then we found out that there was a significant amount of debt on those buildings. And so what we thought, you know, was a building, you know, valued at 10 million, that we would get 10 million for, we got, you know, 10 bucks or something like that, you know, more than that, but, but you know what I'm saying?
Right.
So, so can you talk about that with, with the changes that are expected to occur? What kind of debt might be on the current facilities that we might, you know, so that we know upfront exactly what we should expect?
Yes, in fact, part of the, part of the process to make the recommendations we made this time was to look at just those issues and, and understand that. But I will also, I think it's important to say that, from the recommendations we just made, it doesn't yield any facilities. No facilities, no, no actual school buildings are closing.
Right.
And so it doesn't yield any facilities, and to your point, yes, we thought, you'd always like to think that properties are worth a lot more, but they only are worth what the market is, is suggesting, and as we looked at the, the, the properties that were sold from a couple of years ago, some of those we thought would be pretty significant, and they did not turn out to be that because the market didn't support
Germantown.
Those prices.
Okay. And, and I think that's it for right now, I'll come back. I'll come back, thank you.
Thank you, good afternoon. I want to go to some of the reform efforts and ask, how are we evaluating the Renaissance process? And how is that being used to inform, I mean, you inherited the Renaissance process. One of the big controversies with it is the stranded cost, whatever that number could be. What are we doing to monitor the current ones? And how are we changing that process so that we're, it doesn't look like we're triaging and picking certain kids over other kids?
Yes, thank you. The, thank you for the question. And, and one of the things that we're doing, I think first and foremost, last year, there was a, there was a pretty significant and comprehensive process to do what is called the authorizing quality initiative. That is to look at several factors across all charter schools, not just the RIN charters, not just the Renaissance charters, but all charters, to see how they were performing against a set of metrics of standards. And then it allowed for the consistent monitoring of those schools as a factor in the renewal process. And so that's also applied to Renaissance, which have specific catchment areas, and which also take the children who already live in those boundaries. A couple of things that have informed the process are that typically with the Renaissance, we find that children who are living in a community who are not currently attending the neighborhood school, in many cases are coming back to attend the Renaissance school, which means that if we have put a cap on that school, then those, based on the current enrollment, and then there are more children who want to attend, then those children must go somewhere else simply because of the cap that we've imposed, that we've put on that school, if in fact it attracts, attracts more students back. And so one of the things that we've looked at over the last six years is, what's the, what's the population in that area that could be attending, that could be attending a neighborhood school, and using a higher percentage of those students returning to the school so that if in fact those children do return, it is not above the cap, and then they're forced to go somewhere else if they so choose? So that's one. The other thing is the constant monitoring of the school now, not just at renewal time, but now the charter school office are making visits to the schools. And with the Renaissance, which is different than the, than the regular charters, is that there are a set of specific guidelines and targets that those schools must meet. And that becomes a process in the, that also becomes a decision-making in the renewal process as well.
So, so to my question, how are we reducing the structural costs related to Renaissance? And because, you know,
Yep.
In all fairness, when you have a cohort, not to mention that we have to redo our feeder patterns, but when you have a cohort of schools, you know, you're pinning one school next to another school, this one gets additional 4,000, whatever the number is, this one doesn't, and then we're comparing both of them.
Right. Yeah, I mean, so part of it is that cap issue, and a part of it is the cap, because if in fact, if in fact, and this is, I'm trying to do this in a way that is understandable. So if there, if there are 600 students who live in the boundary, but we've only approved the Renaissance for 300 students, then if those other 300 students return, then they will be pushed to other schools simply because the cap that we put on the Renaissance was 300. This time, what we're doing very, what we're doing differently is making the cap large enough to absorb children if they want to return to that school, because it can only be the children in those neighborhoods. And if those children don't go, and that, that then brings down the stranded cost because those students then are not forced somewhere else. So that in and of itself then lowers the amount of what is needed in other places to serve the same children who live in that boundary. So that would then, in and of itself, reduce the cost per pupil, the additional cost per pupil in this process.
So what are we doing for the neighboring schools? Again, the issue of comparison, comparing in a neighborhood, in a cohort of schools, if we're not providing the same infusion of investment? My concern is moving forward, it's not about giving the Renaissance charter more slots, it's about what is the investment we're doing to the neighboring school to help that school?
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah, yes. Yeah, no, I got it, thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, I was confusing the question. And so part of this is, and, part of the process now is not looking just at the, at the Renaissance school, it's looking at schools now in a geographical area of the city. Looking at them through feeder patterns and, and understanding that. That becomes a, a part of the criteria we use to recommend a new charter or not. And in some cases, charter, new charter applications have been for certain areas of the city, or they wanted to expand, and our recommendation was against expanding because the schools surrounding that particular charter were actually outperforming the charter, even in some cases with less revenue. I mean, and so, so, so part of this is not just thinking about the Renaissance, but thinking about what investments need to be made inside of the, the geographical area for the schools to improve, and things like then technology, things like then the maintenance, the, the repairs of the school, things like resources or programs then become extremely important.
Is our goal, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, you weren't here, when we talked about Renaissance, it was about providing some reforms. Was our goal not to bring those schools at some point back into the system? Or were, you know, if I remember,
Yeah.
Part of the selling point of the Renaissance was, here we have these good practices, just like charter schools, it's the same discussion we had with charter schools, which was, we're going to bring these folks, but the idea is to create best practices and then do a systematic piece. So, because, you know, we're entering year six, seven of Renaissance.
Yeah.
Are we just looking to continue to, and I, I see that you have the turnarounds, and I'll ask you a little bit about the, what's the difference with the turnarounds? But is, at some point, are those schools not coming back into the system?
Yeah, no, the, the, and I wasn't here, so I don't know the original premise, but it hasn't been a conversation about returning the Renaissance charters to the district, but the, the conversation instead
Even when they're not performing?
No, 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 the conversation instead is around performance. And so that's why some of the Renaissance are being non-renewed, because they're a set of structured targets that those schools must meet. And that's the reason for being Renaissance, and better is just not, better is not sufficient. You have to be much better because the whole point is the turnaround. And so the, the turnaround strategy, I think, was, Renaissance was a part of a general turnaround strategy that was both in district and out of district. And I think some used the in-district strategy, and then other you, others, and then other schools, we applied the Renaissance process to those schools, but it is,
So how is
If they're not performing, they do come back.
So the turnaround model that you're now proposing, how is that going to be diff, the, the district turnaround? What supports are those turnarounds going to receive? And then more importantly, and I know, I always ask at the end, and then I get time clocked out of this, one of the, the important things that I have found in all of this disruption as it relates to parents and community input is, you know, how are we better articulating to our parents where their schools are, so that they don't feel like they're getting told kind of at the last moment, you know, right now, we don't know what these three turnaround schools are going to be. What are we doing now to better inform our parents about where their schools are? But I'm, I'm interested to see how the in-district turnaround is going to be different.
Yeah, so the, so a couple of things on the
And are they going to get the same resources?
Yeah, well, we have now, we have in our budget to the state, and I, and I think we talked about it when we were here last, talking about our budget, when there are, I think, I believe it's $16 million that's set aside for in-district turnaround. And so that's a part of the investments that would go into those schools. Now, schools that were historically known as the Promise Academies make up the first set of schools that are in the in-district turnaround. So I think, I believe it's still 12.
Right.
And then we're talking about identifying three additional schools that would also be in-district turnarounds. And in these schools would be, there, there are some schools that can go off and come up with a, a proposal and, and redesign themselves. In this case, because there's a history where the schools are underperforming, this will be a pretty structured approach to, it's like the climate in the building, the instructional program in the building, the interventions in the building, all of those things would be structured in a way that schools, the whole point is to dramatically increase the improvement, I mean, the performance of those students. And so the distinction would be not just a whole lot of extra things, but also but also a specific program around climate, culture, instructional programming that will be in schools. And I will also add this, that 80% of our budget supports all of the neighborhood schools that are in and around and continuing the work that we're doing. That's why we did the PSAT, that's why we're training individuals on early literacy. But that set aside is for the purpose of turnaround. And we, that is designed to be a pretty significant investment in those schools.
So it will be comparable? You will be able to come during your budget testimony and say, there is a comparable investment?
Absolutely.
Because I know what, we, we labeled a lot of schools Promise, and then we didn't give them money because of the budget stuff.
That's right. Well, he gave it and then took it away.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
So, you know, so are you going to monitor that on an investment per student? Because you're saying 16 million, how many students are we talking about with that 16 million?
Yeah, I mean, it's, well, we're talking about the, the current Promise Academies. I don't know how many children are there. And then the three new schools. But in addition, one of the things that I think is important, both in our annual budget and our five-year plan, we call out a, I mean, we make a distinction for those turnaround programs so that it becomes a budget item, and it becomes a part of the investments in the way we think about investments for those schools specifically. Not just what's left and then give it to these schools or take it from these schools, but instead making sure those investments are clear upfront. And then we provide for those as we, as we do our five-year plan and our annual budgets.
Okay. So, so, so your understanding is that there's never been a discussion about the Renaissance potentially coming back? And so the ones that are not getting renewed, which ones have not been renewed? Because I don't know of any.
Yeah, there was one, Young Scholars was one, that was not going to be renewed. And they, the parents asked to go with, I believe it was Mastery. And then there are others that we have up for non-renewal now, or consider non-renewal, and those schools at the moment would come back to district schools.
Is that a public list? And have parents been informed?
Is that, is that public? Yes. Yes, we can get the names of those for you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. My Collins, I'll make a comment. You don't have to answer mine. We can answer it next budget, because we want to get to the public. But we noted that, you stated that there are, that we have 31% of third graders able to read at grade level according to PSSA. And yet, on that same page, you mentioned that 18 reading specialists are working with students. And 58% literacy specialists are working with teachers. And maybe we need to have more specialists working with the students than the teachers. So maybe the 18 should be, and the 58 should be flipped. Having said that, I'm going to, so I'll give you that, you can respond later, but we're going, I'm going to go to Councilman Owen. Councilman Squiller has one question that he neglected.
He wants to go ahead, or should I go?
Yes, all right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Councilman Owen. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the borrowing the money, how much money per day do we use? Um, as far as if we borrow like $100 million, does that give us 10 more days? If we borrow $15 million, does that give us?
Hi. Our average cash spend per day is $10 million on average. However, the cash flow isn't, it fluctuates through the month. So for instance, we, there are some days where we're not, we may not disperse any funds out, but then we would have a payment for salaries. So the average is $10 million a day.
$10 million a day. So, so if we borrow another $100 million, that gives us 10 days?
On average, yes.
Okay, approximately. So we're not really buying that much time?
Yeah, it's a, you know, the thinking is, is like getting to the next payroll. How, you know, getting to each next payroll.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. After Councilman Owen, then we're going to revoke to, or go to panel two. So Laurie Shore from the Mayor's Office, Education Office, Philly Goes to College, Graduation Co., Campus Philly, and Graduate Philadelphia will come up next. So we're going to move right along. Councilman Owen?
Oh, thank you very much, Chair. Well, in, what is it, good afternoon. Um, so I'll go through a couple of questions, and then I'll kind of go into the policy issues. But could you tell me, how much money does the school district get from gaming? And, and the other thing is, how much money does the school district get from red light cameras? Gaming and red light cameras?
Gaming and red light cameras.
Yeah.
Okay. Can we get the rest of your questions?
Yes, okay. Well, somebody's crunching those numbers. Look, I understand it's $17 million per year for red light cameras, of which I can't tell how much comes to Philadelphia on any basis. And I'm not, I think periodically money comes in, but I think the issue that you have is, you cannot predict on an annual basis. Like it would be better to get $5 million every year than to get $8 million one year and $3 million the next year. And, but I don't actually even know how much you get. And, and I don't know how much you get from gaming as well. I'm just kind of curious. Okay, so while they're crunching that number, can I ask you these questions? One is that when it comes to the Philadelphia School District, it's unlikely, in my opinion, that there's a lot more money out in Harrisburg. So Harrisburg, looking to the school district and the city, wants to figure out how we're going to come up with more money. And that is a problem, you know, that we kind of struggle with. Uh, so what I'm interested in knowing, because the, the city has, in the last four years, come up with about $350 million in reoccurring funds each year. Um, and that has put a lot of stress on the city. At the same time, just this year, we had an issue of coming up with money. And as far as I can tell, there was $105 million in unidentified over appropriations in the city budget. That's my opinion. Nobody has, else has to take that. But basically, $105 million in unidentified over, they're, they're identified in that it's for, for a certain topic, but they're over appropriations. We don't have zero-based budgeting, and we don't exactly know where the dollars go. Uh, so let me give you a, for example, so you understand what I'm talking about. I have a department of 10 people, and for the last 10 years, my department of 10 people gets, you know, $300,000. But in one year, it has $2,300,000 with no increases in budget or operation. I'd call that an over appropriation. And at the end of that period of time, the $2 million is moved or transferred to another project, which has not been identified as to what that money is. And we don't actually have a way of forcing that money to be identified. But when I got a vote on the budget, I would like to know what that money is for. It's probably for a good reason. I just don't know what it is for. And I can't really tell if I should vote for school funding or what I should do with it. And so that is a problem that, that occurs to me. As to, you know, we don't know whether we should, or I don't know whether, I can only speak for myself, I should vote for $105 million out of the existing budget so that we don't raise taxes, we don't cut programs, we provide the money. Or, you know, we have to increase taxes or something like that, or not provide all the money. Um, in, with, in light of that background, it becomes very difficult to, to deal with Harrisburg in trying to get more money from them when they point their finger at us. And, and this type of thing that you see going on. The bigger problem for me within that context, and this is, so I give you that background. It appears to me that while the school district, the administration, is dealing with putting out fires every other day, that what Harrisburg is interested in is what is your long-term plan? And maybe that isn't the administration, maybe it is, maybe it's the management. I'm, I'm not, I'm just asking. But the problem that is identifiable to me in my conversations and when I go to Harrisburg is it's the inequity of the system, inequity. That means, uh, there is a school with 3D printers and iPads. And it's a public school, it's a charter school. But you can only get in there if you hit the lottery, unless you're on the board, I think, and then your kids go. And now that charter school says that you can't get into their high school unless you went to their elementary school. And I'm not sure, is that proper? In other words, what happens is, if you don't get into that, that elementary portion, the school of that charter, then you're not going to their high school. And it seems more like a private school than a public school. Um, so that, I don't know if that's true or not. I'd like to find out if that's legal and proper. Because now everybody wants to get their kids into the elementary school, where they're not going to get into the high school. Um, what, next to that charter school is a magnet school. It's a public school, but you got to have all A's, you got to be gifted, you got, there, there you get in there. And next to that school is a neighborhood school. Some of them are good, some of them are bad. And there's Renaissance schools and all kinds of things. So at the end of the day, within our city, from neighborhood to neighborhood, we have really good schools and we have really bad schools. But it's one system, and that's just the city of Philadelphia. Because next to us is a county, because all our schools are, you know, I'm saying what you know because I know we're in the public. So we're next to a county, or a school district, I'm sorry, where the median income's $335,000 per household. And so the amount of money that's going to the school is, is very high. And, and the amount per student is very high. And they have newer equipment, more technology. So the efficiency means that more of the dollar is going into classroom for teacher salaries, for teacher benefits, for technology, for education, and less is going into wasted administration. How can we go to Harrisburg? And how can we give them an overall plan of bringing equity and efficiency into the school district? Because a lot of what I hear, and I can be wrong, so I'm asking, are, it seems like a system where you're addressing specific problems. I'm not saying you personally are doing a great job, thank you. But it's what the school district is. In other words, here's a charter school, because you don't want to go to the public school. So that takes care of your immediate problem. Here's a magnet art school, for everybody who wants to go to the magnet art school. And then here is a, you know, vocational, vocational school. But, but there's more money for certain schools and less money for other schools. And then I find that the equity problem also means not only the fact that depending on where you live in Philadelphia, you'll have the opportunity for great education, or you'll have a pretty bad education awaiting you, that, that, I know, I know, Mark, there, there, there's, there's, there's a question in there somewhere, right? Mark's making fun of me. He's, he's good that way. Is a point well taken, Mark? Councilman Squiller, I'm sorry. But this is my, this is my problem in how we deal with the question in this hearing, the 2015 academic and social agenda. In other words, if we continue to have a system, this school happens to be next to Penn. So it gets all this great stuff. This school is not next to Penn. I mean, it doesn't, it's not an equitable system. It's an inequitable system getting worse. And therefore, anyone who's in a school that isn't getting resources, money, doesn't happen next to Drexel or something like that, isn't a magnet, doesn't have some special charter or whatever, people want to get out of that school. And they're not happy about the school system. Anyone in those schools are very happy, and they want to protect what they have, and they don't want to change the school system, because they're afraid their kids are not going to get that very special treatment that is being developed. So everything that I hear is about providing to certain schools a better situation. But how do we get all the schools, you know, improved in a systematic way?
Yeah, so did we get the question? Did, we have the answer to the other question? Okay. So I'm going to, if you want to come up Fran and talk about that?
I'll let her take this.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
Good afternoon.
The beginning of your statement was a question around gaming revenue and red light cameras. So the gaming revenue primarily and predominantly actually goes straight to the city revenue to lower the wage tax income. We have an estimated $1.9 million in our adopted 2015, 2016, our budget, the current budget year that ran fiscal '16. And that's for, that's from a casino settlement. So that's the only gaming revenue that we actually have in our budget. We also get $12 million parking authority contribution. Um, and that's been in the range of 11 and a half to $12 million annually.
Okay, so you get about 11 and a half to 12 million annually from the parking authority? And from gaming, you have 1.9 for this year or annually?
Uh, thi- this year.
For this year?
Yes.
Okay. Is that typical, would you know, or you don't know?
I'm sorry.
Is that typical? You typically get around 1.9 million?
It's, it's a settlement, so I'd have to get back to you on the details. Last fiscal year, we, as part of the settlement, we got just under 3 million, just around 3 million.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, do you want, did you want me to answer the system?
I would, I'm sorry, I know. Could you answer that question?
Yeah, so the system, the, from a systems perspective, and we call it a system of great schools, and one of the things that I think is important is 80% of their work on improving all schools. And so it is the things like the early literacy training that happened with all of the teachers. This some, well, with 40 schools, it didn't happen with all, but all will be trained over the next three years. The technologies that I talked about earlier, the, the PSAT for many of the students, looking at advanced placement, trying to go to, we have several schools this year that have increased the number of days that children are exposed to art and/or music. Um, and, and so those are things that, 80% of their work. Then another 20% of their work around some of the urgent things that must happen. These things are not popular, and they're hard. But by the same token, it's very important for us to address the children, to address the circumstances that children are faced with in those schools. And so I think that this whole notion of equity is important. And that's why it's important to get Harrisburg to approve a budget. But it also needs to be a budget that is closer to what the governor has proposed, because he's addressing this issue. Because it's an inequitable system if in fact there are flat cuts across all school districts in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And let's say the cut was 10%. That's going to disproportionately impact Philadelphia more than it will anywhere else because of our population and all of the, all of the needs of our children. And so we have to get that right as well. And then we have to have a structure in place that deals in a systemic way of, with all of our schools and the schools that need something to provide those, to infuse a very different learning environment for the children. And so that happens in 20% of the schools, 80% of their work is on improving all schools. And I'll just add a couple of examples, because you used Penn Alexander. I don't know what charter school you were talking about. I do want to also add a couple of schools that are improving pretty dramatically. Duckery is a school that is doing some tremendous work. And we're seeing some pretty significant improvements there. The Cornell, which I talked about earlier, Arthur, Jackson, Nevinger. These are schools that are in neighborhoods that were, were not always considered good options that are really becoming good options now for the community. And we're trying to increase that number of schools as well.
Okay, I'm sorry, let me just get an answer on this, this one point, this question. Uh, I have, I was at a Catholic school in a relatively poor neighborhood where the parents send their kids, but it's only goes up to elementary school. But the parents now don't want to send their kids to that elementary school because they say their kids, when they graduate to elementary school, can't do the lottery system to get into the local charter school. Uh, is it the case that a charter school can say that if you get into this charter school in kindergarten or first grade, you're pretty much good all the way till 12th grade? And if you come from another school trying to get into our ninth grade, you can't do the lottery?
If it's a, if it's a K-12, I believe that is the case, if in fact the children get into the school in kindergarten.
Right.
And, I mean, they, typically they would stay in. I don't think though that it's allowed, and I'll have to get this response to you, because I don't want to mention something that's inaccurate. To, if you have, if, if they have space to turn children away that want to get into the later grades.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to ask, we hope that you all will be able to stay around a little while. Panel two, Laurie Shore, Leanna Cabral, Sayo Hormozzi, Deborah Diamond, Barbara Maddelman. And the next panel, get ready, because this will be a short panel. Helen Gem, D- and the next panel, get ready, because this will be a short panel, Helen Gemm, Dr. Walter Palmer, David Hardy, Donna Cooper, and Joe Willard. You'll be next.
Madam Chair, because I have another event I have to get to, I have a, I have a group of individuals here who can respond to questions, they're all here sitting, um, in the front, and so they will be here, um, and able to respond to any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Helen Gemm had an event at three o'clock, so she had to leave, but Susan Gobreski also is leaving, so if we can put her in, we'll give them that, because she has to leave to pick up her kids at four. So, we can put her, we're helping.
Thank you, good afternoon. Feel free, identify yourself and begin.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Blackwell and other members of Education Committee. My name is Lori Shore, and I'm the Ed, Chief Education Officer for the City of Philadelphia. Thank you for inviting me to testify today regarding Resolution 150672. Um, I have not very long testimony, but I think I'm going to truncate it a little bit, you have it in front of you. Um, and what I'd like to highlight is, we really came, when we came into office, we had two, two goals. We really wanted to increase the high school graduation rate to eighty percent and, uh, double the percentage of residents with four-year college degrees to thirty-six percent. Um, we are at a seventy percent high school graduation rate, if you look at a six-year rate, which is what we've always looked at, because we have so many kids who drop out that we want to give them those two years to come back, and we want to count them. So, that's good news for the city, um, and we have about twenty-five percent of our citizens who have a four-year degree. Um, while we did not meet our goals yet, I mean, I guess we have another two months left, but, um, I think we can, we can say that we've made some progress. Um, the results we achieved during this period, um, had, we had unforeseen challenges, as we've talked about this morning, the massive budget cuts and deficits, and also, I think, for the first time in recent history, we had collectively determined, we had to collectively determine what public education meant and whose responsibility it was to adequately fund it. These fundamental questions had to be addressed during a period of unprecedented volatility in educational leadership and governance at the local and state level. During my tenure in our office, I've worked with five state secretaries of education, five chairs of the School Reform Commission, seventeen members of the SRC, and five different leaders of the School District of Philadelphia. Despite the turmoil and budget cuts that have defined our recent history, I'm proud to say we have made progress, as I've outlined, but, and also, as a city, we've increased our financial support to provide almost four hundred million in new recurring funds to ensure our schools continue to operate. This is the largest increase in the last thirty years and an important investment in the future of our city. Um, we've also, as a city, led advocacy efforts at the state to create a fair school funding formula. We've built, um, partnerships with nonprofits and businesses. These partnerships have helped to build and sustain the public will for increasing the city's capacity to provide more high-quality educational options for our students and citizens. Partnership and advocacy have been the backbone of our work and the key to some of our successes. While policy advising is the key component of the ma, the work in the Mayor's Office of Education, we also provide many direct services to families and community members. Those services range from helping parents to advocate with school operators when they feel their students have not received the services needed, to meeting monthly with college administrators on how to better retain our Philadelphia students who come to their campuses, and also regularly convening community partners who work on STEM programming for disenfranchised youth. Today, I wanted to make special mention of two programs from our office that are now part of the Philly Talent Collaborative, an initiative this council supported in this year's budget. The Philly Talent Collaborative, which is comprised of two programs that sit in my office right now, along with, um, folks who are at the table with me today, Graduate Philly and Campus Philly. The collaborative is, is the most comprehensive city-supported program devoted to increasing the number of highly skilled city residents in any city. And I want to thank you for being so supportive of this very important work. First, the Graduation Coaches Campaign, which I, most of you have heard about several times, um, is headed by Saeo Hormozzi. It's a citywide initiative that really works at helping adults who are in the lives of children. So, you would see in front of you all of the numbers, how many, we've trained five thousand, five hundred and eighty-six coaches, we've produced twenty-six videos that, that help parents answer very fundamental questions. You can see them on Comcast On Demand, they're on Channel sixty-four from three to four every day. Basically, this came from so many parents saying to us, I want to help my child, but I don't, myself don't have the knowledge. And so, we have been working diligently, um, particularly in the Kensington neighborhood, which we looked at in terms of educational outcomes and decided to do a little bit of a place-based strategy there. So, our neighborhood initiative there, we work with twenty-one different locations inside Kensington. And we also started a new, um, initiative this year called the Health, it's a health initiative, where we're working closely with, uh, St. Christopher's Hospital and Jefferson Nemours to work with their physicians, to give them information about education, uh, how they can help their, uh, students to know whether they're on track or not, and get them information about, um, where to get resources. Um, the next thing I want to talk about is, uh, the Philly Goes to College Office, not Office, but the Philly Goes to College Program. It's a community-based resource and referral center that connects Philadelphia residents of any age with the help they need to advance their education and go to college, or any step along the post-secondary continuum. Over time, Philly Goes to College, which is headed by Leanna Cabral, um, has evolved into a unique and critical initiative that engages with Philadelphia residents unlike, unlike any other resource in the city. We do this in three ways. We offer workshops, technical assistance, organizations want us to come out and do technical assistance with the citizens, we, we do that. We offer three large-scale citywide events, and, um, we have a new initiative called Connect to College, which was launched in October twenty fourteen. It's now the only citywide initiative providing comprehensive services to all Philadelphians on college-going. Um, so, as you can see, there's, we, we do this in multiple ways. Since twenty-ten, we've engaged more than thirty-five thousand Philadelphians. Um, we have four hundred and twenty-eight people who have subscribed to our texting platform, which is an adaptive texting platform, so if you text a number, we ask you a series of questions, and based upon your answer to those questions, we send you personalized text messages on, you know, if, if you're in a certain zip code, there's going to be a scholarship workshop tonight that you can attend. Um, we've also done seven thousand eighty presentations, um, and, I'm sorry, it's been viewed seven thousand eighty times. Um, and this year alone, we've already given forty-eight presentations. So, that's the two programs that have sat in my office, that along with the two programs presenting today, really make up the Philly Talent Collaborative. Um, I just want to end with, um, they, um, I'm sorry, where am I? So, in closing, I'd like to offer one bit of insight into education in the city in the future. Um, there are the very beginning movements in the city towards mo, more local control in the K-12 school level. I think this is one trend that will reap many benefits for our students going forward. School advisory councils and autonomy schools are a move in the right direction, and I believe community schools can also help this movement if we conceive of them not only as client-centered community schools, a place where services can be offered, but also as citizen-centered community schools, where the community and their knowledge concerning the students is valued and called upon frequently. And I know that the community schools is something that the council's very interested in. I would encourage you to go back and look at Ben Franklin High School, um, in East Harlem in the nineteen thirties, which was a great example of a community school. Um, I do not see this move to more local control as a replacement for rigorous standard-based instruction and well-constructed assessments, but as a complement to those educational set necessities. High-quality schooling is increasingly characterized by a more personalized education, and giving more localized control to the schools will allow schools and educators to react and change their methods quickly to tailor to the needs of each individual student. These are important moves into a better future for our city, a future that understands that teachers, families, and communities have crucial knowledges needed to make all schools and any turnaround valuable and sustainable. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell, for the opportunity to update the members of the City Council's Education Committee and their staff members about Graduate Philadelphia. As I hope you remember from my testimony last spring, I'm Barbara Maddelman, Executive Director of Graduate Philadelphia. Since last appearing in front of this audience, so many great things have happened, I'm grateful for the opportunity to share them with you today. Graduate Philadelphia works with comebackers, adults who have some college credit, go back to school and complete their degree. In Philadelphia, there's seventy thousand adults in this situation, and our college success advisors support these adults to and through degree completion. Since we began offering free advising services, we've helped over seven hundred adults get their diploma and are currently supporting over twenty-five hundred adults who are either in school, who are, or, who are in the pre-enrollment stage. Over seventy percent of the comebackers we serve are low-income and African-American. Our main focus is to make sure our students persist and take at least one course per semester in order to assure that they will stay on track to degree completion. In addition to individual advising, we offer monthly college open houses and workshops on college access issues, such as how to finance a college degree, how to successfully take an online course, and how to choose the best academic program to fit individual needs. Adults who have a college degree are better able to compete for jobs that pay family-sustaining wages. For adults in Philadelphia, as noted in a recent Philadelphia Inquirer article, a city with the highest deep poverty level of the ten largest cities in the country, getting an education is even more important to help break the cycle of poverty that affects so many Philadelphians and has a ripple effect across the city. Also, we know that the single largest risk factor for students not completing high school or college is not having a pa, a parent or an adult in their lives who finished college. In many cases, this is knowledge on how to navigate the complexities of an education system, something that college-educated parents can provide regardless of income level. Therefore, every adult we help helps the people in their family and social circles succeed. The return on investment for our city is well worth our efforts, as this is really about economic development. In May, Graduate Philadelphia, along with Campus Philly, Philly Goes to College, and the Graduation Coach Campaign testified about our work to help students across the education pipeline, get to college, stay in college, graduate from college, and get a great internship or job in Philadelphia. We formed the Talent Collaborative to more formally create opportunities to work together, as our organizations complement each other so well and are stronger together than working independently. Over the past several months, we have collaborated on the following: hosting a week of college access programs at a pop-up location in Parkside, featuring Graduate Philadelphia, Philly Goes to College, and the Graduation Coach Campaign, in an effort to bring our services directly to students, young and older, who live in West Philly, who want to get a college degree. We also offered a college fair for City of Philadelphia employees, featuring twelve colleges and universities, most of whom offer a twenty-five percent discount to city employees, and we did that in partnership with Philly Goes to College. We disseminated information to Graduate Philadelphia comebackers on job and internship fairs, as well as opportunities to get tickets to cultural events through Campus Philly. We've shared information via social media, Twitter and Facebook, about opportunities offered by our partners in an effort to get more information out to as many, to as wide an audience as possible, who might want to take advantage of our services. In the upcoming months, there are even more programs we're participating together, such as Philly Goes to College's Level Up Event on November twelfth. Graduate Philadelphia is grateful for this, for the support from both the City of Philadelphia and from our talent collaborative partners. Together, we will continue to impact the lives of our students as they seek to achieve their educational dreams. Many thanks for your time and consideration today.
Thank you, Chairwoman Blackwell and distinguished members of council. My name is Deborah Diamond, and I'm the President of Campus Philly. I'm pleased to have this opportunity to update you on Campus Philly's activities and impact in Philadelphia. As you know, Campus Philly's mission is to fuel economic growth by encouraging college students to study, explore, live, and work in Philadelphia. We're an eleven-year-old nonprofit with thirty-four regional college and university partners. Over the past eleven years, our impact has been felt in the rise of students staying in Philadelphia after they graduate. According to our two thousand fourteen research study, Choosing Philadelphia, sixty-four percent of regional college students stay in Philadelphia after graduation, higher than fif, the fifty percent who stay in Boston, or the thirty-four percent who stay in Baltimore. Our work to retain college students begins with local high school students. Campus Philly, as part of the Philadelphia Talent Collaborative, orients high school students to college life in Philadelphia, including the importance of obtaining an internship while in college. We partner with Philly Goes to College on their Students With a Goal events, the upcoming Level Up Event, and the annual Step Up to College Event. At these and other events for high school students, we present workshops on college success, including the importance of obtaining an internship and how to use Campus Philly to do that while in college. In fact, through our work with the Philadelphia Talent Collaborative, our focus on internships has extended to adults returning to college through Graduate Philadelphia's programs. All Graduate Philadelphia students are invited to our career events to meet employers and prepare for the workforce after they finish their degrees. Campus Philly's college internship program is the largest of any in the country. We maintain a website, campusphilly.org/careers, that hosts more than a thousand internships and entry-level jobs for college students. It's free for students to use the platform, and we know it works. Nationally, sixty-one percent of college students report having internships while in college. In Philadelphia, that figure is eighty-one percent. Our city does a much better job of providing students pathways to employers and job opportunity than other regions. We know that internship experience is critical, not just for retaining college students in our, in our city, but also in increasing equity and outcome for college students. Employers report that they value internship experience over a grade point average, major, or even school attended. And when students only have access to friends and family internship opportunities, students from college-going families are favored over students who are the first in their families to go to college. Campus Philly helps to level that playing field by promoting paid internships to all students in the city. One pillar of Campus Philly's program is to serve native and new Philadelphians. Whether you're from North Broad Street or Northern California, when you attend college in Philadelphia, you're experiencing the city in a new way for the first time. Our programs welcome and prepare all those students to be successful in college and to use the city as their campus. We welcomed more than five thousand new and returning students to Philadelphia at this year's College Fest in September. Councilwoman Blackwell was there to welcome them, uh, encourage them to embrace the educational opportunities Philadelphia provides, and to think of Philadelphia as their home. That's the Campus Philly message as well. We look forward to continuing to expand our work in the coming year and keeping you informed about the difference we're making in the lives of students and the impact we're having on educational attainment and the workforce in Philadelphia. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you all very much. Dr. Walt Palmer, David Hardy, Donna Cooper, PCCY, David Hardy, of course, Boys Latin Charter School, Dr. Walter Palmer, Palmer Foundation, Joe Willard, PEC, People's Emergency Center, and Susan Gobreski, Education Voters, P.A. Thank you very much. Feel free to identify yourself and then begin your testimony.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you. Sorry you had to wait so long.
That's okay. My name is Walter Palmer, Palmer Foundation and University of Pennsylvania. Um, first of all, I want to thank-
And before you begin, excuse me one moment, Helen Gemm had to leave, but her testimony will be added to the record as though she were here. Thank you.
Thank you.
She's gone.
I want to thank you once again for allowing me to testify before this committee. This has been the third or fourth time that I've brought testimony to this committee on education and on education reform in the City of Philadelphia. And, um, oftentimes, you know, I've said I've been total resident, coming back and forth, because I always question what goes on, what's done with the testimony that most of us bring here. I want to talk to you about the school system of Philadelphia, which I have a little bit of knowledge about. There's a protracted struggle that's going on with inside the school district of Philadelphia, and has been for some time. There are a lot of players that are involved, and one time I came before this council and said, who runs the school district of Philadelphia? Is it the governor? Is it the state legislature? Is it the mayor? Is it the city council? Is it the SRC? Is it superintendent? Is it the charter school office? Is the Philadelphia School Partnership? Who runs it? Because all of these entities somehow have a disparate impact, or have an impact, uh, on education in our city. Um, in the nineteen fifties, we got the, the Brown Decision that, uh, there was no such thing as separate and equal. Um, in fifty-five, we set up the Black People's University of Philadelphia, addressed the segregation, discrimination that took place with children inside of Philadelphia, but also around the country. Between nineteen fifty-five and nineteen sixty-five or so, we created a number of independent schools across the city and around the state to address discrimination in Philadelphia. We've been very concerned about, uh, the lives of black children. Black lives mattered then, black lives matter now. In nineteen sixty-seven, a number of students addressed us and asked us to help them challenge the school district on a number of issues. Black history was one, Afrocentric dress was another, there were many, there were twenty-five different issues. And what we did at that point in time in sixty-seven, organized students across the entire state of Philadelphia, um, of- students across the entire state of Philadel- City of Philadelphia, and 100,000 children and more marched out of the schools of Philadelphia, 20,000 marched on the City of Philadelphia, and 5,000 marched on the Board of Education to support their peers who were arguing and debating over getting their 25 demands met. They got their 25 demands met between 10:00 AM and 12:00 noon, 1967, November 17, 1967. But before they could conclude their meeting, they were attacked unprovoked by the police, and it turned into a police riot. I, of course, was arrested. I was arrested for riot, mayhem, conspiracy, and assault and battery on a police officer. In the 1960s, we pushed and pushed and pushed for community control of schools. In the 1970s, the 1980s, by the 1980s, we pushed for parental school choice. In the 1990s, we went citywide with the Black Community Council on education, education reform. By 1995, we worked very closely with the Catholic Archdiocese, Cardinal Anthony Bevelacqua, to try to get vouchers and charter schools and cyber schools in the City of Philadelphia and across the state. In 1997, after two failed attempts, the governor at that time, Ridge, was able to get a successful bill in Pennsylvania to give us charter schools and cyber schools. But the war had been going on for a long time. All kinds of stories were said about what would happen if, in fact, you allowed charter schools and cyber schools and other options. But yet, the reality was that poor people, particularly poor black people, all across the city and across the country, were damp, were demanding, were clamoring for education reform, for change to take place. It was then, it is now. Gwinnepeck and also Temple University and other polling found that 65% Hispanic Latinos, 80% or more African-Americans, all wanted some sort of reform and would, in fact, use vouchers, charters, and cybers if they had the opportunity. But what happened is, the people who I named before dug in. Every one of the administrators that came in after the struggle of 1967 protected the status quo, all of them. That was the black ones and the white ones. There was the men and the women, and they wanted to try to maintain it. Arlene Ackerman came in, of course, and she supported the whole idea of no child left behind, which was a failed attempt. AYP was a failed attempt. Then came Horan Beck before her, who we thought was supposed to be more progressive. What happened is, the white liberals and so-called white progressives, along with uninformed black middle-class people who had the wherewithal to be able to have their children in better schools, were giving resistance to the change that poor people wanted and needed. We then went on further. Paul Vallas comes into the picture. What Paul Vallas does is, he somehow does not want charters or reform either. But what happens, he finds out that by using charter schools, it helped him go to his bottom line. And so, under Paul Vallas, we were able to get a significant number of charter schools. 75 or more were done by Paul Vallas, who was superintendent of the schools. Now, it's interesting, it's important to note that this discussion about Renaissance schools. Renaissance schools are not charter schools. Renaissance schools are failed public schools, for the most part, which the district has used as a way of trying hard not to create charter schools, which must be issued by the state of Pennsylvania. The school district can offer, can take an application or not take an application, but the state can, will be the final arbiter in terms of whether or not you'll get a charter. We go on. Arlene Ackerman pushes Renaissance. Then what happens is, we have the SRC that comes in. The SRC is a deal that was made between Mayor Street and the acting lieutenant governor, became governor at that time, Schweiker, and they gave us the SRC. The SRC, for the most part, has really had a failed performance over the many years that have existed. In this, also, this alliance that has taken place in more recent times between the SRC, the superintendent, and the charter school office is the Philadelphia School Partnership, that we find that Mike O'Neill, along with the Philadelphia School Partnership, has paid its way. It has bought off many, many of the schools across the City of Philadelphia, and consequently, we think that all the others, from the governor on down, for the most part, defer to the Philadelphia School Partnership, as if, in fact, they were in a partnership with the neighborhood and the community. What they've done is, they've spread their money around. But what they do at the end of the day, when they decide that they want to somehow close down a particular school, not public schools necessarily, and they've done some, but more like the, I'm sorry, the public schools that they consider to be either modest or failing schools, they found a way in which they avoid, once again, providing real reform, and they offer them to several schools. MASTRI has gotten the largest number of schools given to them over the many years that this has been going on. I suspect they have close to almost 10,000 students that are in those schools. Along with them comes KIP and young scholars. In order to make sure that it was not just a white front, because behind the scene, on the national level, there is a white hostile corporate takeover of black education engineered by Ira Brode, the billionaire from outer California. And he's funded, along with Gates and Walton and Buffett and the rest of them, to help prop up what they consider to be the schools of choice that they pick and choose. This is outside the ambit of those of us who fought hard over these many years for community control of schools. Black people, Hispanic people, Latino people, in their neighborhoods with failing schools should be the first ones to be able to set up schools and to pick those who run those schools for them and their children. And that has not been happening. City council has ignored this and has not really played a significant role up until more recent time in terms of acting as a check and balance on the workings of what's going on. And I suspect that this may still not be the case. But I am asking you, Councilwoman Blackwell, and those who are in earshot of this, who hear this testimony, that they do more than just offer $25 million worth of bailout, but they continue to play a role in a lot of the selections and decision-making that's taking place inside the schools of Philadelphia, not just the sale of the properties, but also in the choices and decisions that are made in terms of how we determine what schools are good schools and bad schools. The school district of Philadelphia has an average of 40% or less for reading and math in all their schools. The bottom 100 schools or so, you have schools in Philadelphia which have zero performance, 6%, 10%, 12%, well under 30% or 40%. And yet, they use that criteria in order to help maintain and control. It's important for the district to understand, and for the council to understand, that people all across this country are looking at different ways in terms of measuring success in terms of education. And they've come to find that the high-stakes mandated testing is not the only way in which you measure. In fact, the most recent quotes coming out of the Pennsylvania Department of Education's new secretary was, he wants to somehow tamp down using PSSA as the only criteria, and maybe only 40% to 50% of that, in addition to other criteria. And I'd like to conclude on that and just simply, once again, challenge the council to be more involved, not just on the surface, but dig in deep to really understand what is going on with our children in Philadelphia. And once again, black lives do matter, and these children are finding out in most cases that in our city, it doesn't matter because we have rarely thrown them away.
Thank you so much, and thanks for all you do to still teach at Penn for the Black Bottom, which is Manchu and all else that you do. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Palmer.
Thank you.
Mr. Hardy or Donna, I will let you. Thank you. David Hardy, Boys of Latin Charter School.
Thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell. Thank you, Dr. Palmer. Good afternoon. My name is David Hardy. I'm the CEO of Boys Latin of Philadelphia, the only all-male public school in Pennsylvania. We serve 98% African-American students. I want to thank the council, in particular, Education Committee Chair Janie Blackwell, for allowing us this opportunity for the public, for public consideration of the education and social agenda for public and charter schools. Our public school system must ensure that students have equal access to high-quality instruction irrespective of race, socioeconomic status, or gender. I come here today with grave concerns about the ability of African-American and Latino boys to access high-quality academic experiences in our city. Philadelphia is facing a crisis. Only 17% of African-American males and 14% of Latino males persisted through at least two years of college, according to the most recent data available from the class of 2009. At present, the district refuses to make current data on college outcomes available in a transparent and accessible fashion that would allow parents, elected officials, and citizens to see how each of our city's public high schools stack up. At this very moment, thousands of Philadelphia families are selecting high schools for their sons and daughters. They are not equipped with the right information to make an educated choice. Parents don't care about the Keystone exams. What they do care about are outcomes. Which schools give their child the best shot at success? Which schools will ensure their children will graduate from high school, attend college, and have the right preparation to graduate from college? The last dataset released publicly was for the class of 2009. The data is now six years stale. When questioned about the low college matriculation rates for our boys, for our African-American and Latino boys, we often hear from the district that college isn't for everybody. To me, this is thinly veiled, this is thinly veiled racism. What the district is really saying to black and Latino boys is, college is not for you. African-American boys are a challenging group for the district. Black boys have low rates of attendance and academic success, including graduation, and high rates of assignments, remedial classes, suspension, and expulsion. When surveyed, almost 50% identified, self-identified as hating school. This comes from a group, when you include African-American and Latino boys, that make up about a third of all district students. This group is severely underrepresented in our selective admissions magnet schools. The district is failing to meet the needs of male African, of African-American male students. In the recent Democratic presidential debate, Senator Bernie Sanders spoke of the days when we, as a country, realized that a high school diploma was a critical qualification for economic success. He spoke proudly about how the country made it a priority to give all students the opportunity to achieve that goal. He said, "Today, a college degree has become the new credential for economic viability. If a college degree is the predictor of future success," Senator Sanders believes, "that we should, we should, excuse me, that that should be the goal of our public education system." I agree. It is criminal to allow our students to believe that they can have a successful future without the proper level of academic preparation. As I said before, only 17% of African-American males in the class of 2009 progressed just through the second year of postgraduate education. We cannot have high hopes for the thousands of young men who are not a part of that 17%. We know that 45% of them dropped out of high school. 28% received a high school diploma but had no plans for further education. Residents in Philadelphia with a bachelor's degree earn anywhere from 43% to 82% more than those with only a high school diploma. Students who do not succeed in college are economically stunted for life. We agree that college degree is critical, excuse me, if we agree that a college degree is critical to future success, thousands of our boys were robbed of that opportunity by schools that did not properly prepare them with high-quality instruction and academics. We need to have college outcome information broadly, transparently available for every, every public high school in this city. The data needs to be broken down by race and gender so that it will allow parents and families and stakeholders the ability to assess schools, assess which schools produce good outcomes for all students. We should ask questions when there is a clear, when there's an underrepresentation among certain demographic groups. We need to address the scarcity of male students of color in our college preparatory programs and who matriculate the college. We need to know, even if we do not like what we see. We cannot change a bad situation unless we know that it is bad. Making that data available is an essential first step. Frankly speaking, there are few, there are few schools that take poorly-prepared students and get them on grade level in just four years of high school. The question should come, the question becomes, should schools focus on enabling students to pass the test or teach students to work beyond their ability? The first option allows adults to say they've done their jobs. The second option allows the student to be successful beyond high school. We need to know the results of the education students receive at each of our high schools. As we endeavor to improve school performance, let us not forget why we're here. We are here to help students craft a meaningful future. If we are serious about that, and if we are serious about what we do, we must ensure that we serve all students, even when they come with challenges. And we must judge our success by the ability of our students to find success at their next level of educational instruction. Anything less is our failure. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I hope you all will remain. I would like to ask you a few questions, Dr. Hardy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell. And, of course, we thank you, on top half of public citizens for children and youth, for being the chair of this committee and holding this important hearing today. And as I say, having been in Harrisburg for eight years, I have found this body to be much more deliberative on the issue of public education than I ever witnessed for eight years in Harrisburg. So, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Given the agenda of today's hearing, which is a social agenda of education, I basically come with three recommendations for what should be on the agenda. How do we change the terms? Dave Hardy, you know, created an incredibly accurate picture of what's going on for boys in the public school system. 80% of the kids in our school district are poor, nearly 15% are special ed, nearly 9% are English language learners, and 17% have been in the child welfare system at some point. So, we have a student population that requires us to be more intentional than any district in this region about how we approach what we're doing. So, one of the things that I think is really remarkable is, in Harrisburg, a bipartisan agreement has been reached, one of the few, to create a new school funding formula. And that's, New School Funding Formula says, if a kid's poor, we need to spend 90% more on them than the average kid. If the kid's mildly poor, like over 100% of the federal poverty level, we have to spend 60% more on them. If the kid's an English language learner, we need to spend 60% more on them. So, the point of that is, everyone agrees at this point that the very children attending our school district require more intensive investment than the average kids. And maybe the state will pass a budget, and it will show that it's done that with the new monies that are going to become available, although it should do it with all the monies. It would be limited to the new. So, it makes me think, for our agenda, perhaps we in Philadelphia, and what city council's urging, should be advocating for a weighted student funding formula within the school district. If we're talking about equity, as your fellow council members have, it doesn't mean every child's treated the same, like $10,000 per kid. It means that we've invested enough for the kid, given their circumstances, to succeed at the same rate as all other children. And so, moving forward, adopting a weighted student funding system across the internal distribution of the funds in the district can make sure that the boys who are falling behind, if they're poor, if they've had experience in the child welfare system, there's more being invested in them rather than the standard amount, because under the circumstances that we have now, they won't succeed. Now, money alone isn't going to solve that problem. How do we spend it right? We've had lots of fights about governance. You laid them out beautifully. It's, it's an endless fight about governance here. And we could continue that fight, who's in charge. And I think you said, when you were asking the superintendent, maybe we should spend more money on the kids than the trainers for the teachers, right? So, I want to go along that pathway and say, I think there are two things. One is, as new money becomes available, thinking about putting it in the schools that are having the highest rate of struggle. Forty of our elementary schools have 20, less than 25% of their kids on grade level at third grade. So, they're not even hitting the 50% mark. Forty of our elementary schools. So, that says to me, we need to be thinking about what's going on in those elementary schools. One is, is there a leadership challenge? You talked about, or was it, was it, Councilwoman Bass talked about her principal staying. Is there principal stability? Are there good teachers? Are there enough reading specialists? Are there enough books? So, thinking about where new funds are going and what's the agreement that's leveraged when they're there. The school district this summer trained 700 teachers on reading instruction, and then followed that with classroom libraries for each of those teachers, and coaches that work not just with the teacher, but with the students too, who are falling behind. And they focused those on the buildings that were struggling the most. That's a third of the elementary schools. We still have to do two-thirds more, and that has to work. But the fact of the matter is, we need to maybe focus our money where our biggest challenges are. The second part is at our high schools. I mean, Dave Hardy couldn't have been clearer about the struggles in our high schools. Now, of the kids that go to district-run schools, about a third of our high school kids go to charters. Half of the kids that stay in the district, in the district-run schools, go to the neighborhood high schools. And we know that that's where our greatest chance to move the needle is. And we know that that's where our greatest chance to move the needle is. We have 89% high school graduation rate from our magnets, and most of those kids are going to college. So if we're going to change the terms here, we have to focus where the greatest number of kids are that aren't really moving up fast enough. And what we know there is that when the state budget cuts happened, many, the biggest staff cuts happened in our neighborhood high schools. Estimates are very high, and we'll be releasing a report in a couple weeks that has the numbers on the staff that were decreased, the staffing complement decreased in these neighborhood high schools. It's a recipe for disaster, not only because they're teenagers, and so there needs to be plenty of adults around, but because we know these kids are starting school years behind. Most principals tell us these kids are three years behind. And we know there's some kids there who need to be accelerated, as Dave Hardy points out. They should be getting college prep courses, and they shouldn't have to apply to mastermen to do that. They should be able to do that in their neighborhood high school. So again, we say to the council, a second part of the agenda, not only is focusing the resources on the elementary schools with the greatest struggle, but on the high schools, the very high schools, the neighborhood high schools, where we know we can have the greatest impact. We have three neighborhood Renaissance high schools, and two of them are, I'm sorry, yeah, we have three neighborhood Renaissance high schools. And each of them is facing its own struggles, because, you know, a Renaissance high school does, has to accept most of the kids who went there, right, from the neighborhood. And yesterday, Monday's Inquirer had a story about a woman who is nationally consulting with turnaround districts, and this is my final point. And she said, "Look, turnaround districts are basically where the state asks a charter operator to come in, take over an entire school district." And she says, "You know, after 10 years of working with Tennessee, Louisiana, and Michigan, what's pretty clear to me is that there's more to this than just instruction." We need, as principals, to be thinking about, do these kids have toothbrushes? Do they have a nurse? Do they have anybody who cares about them at home? Can they sleep in the same place every night?" She's saying that, she who believes in privatization as a vehicle for school reform, because the lives of these kids are very different than the lives of lots of kids in America, and they require our attention. So the final point is not what's on the school district's agenda, but what's on city council's agenda? And how do we align city services in a way through a smart community-school model that really wraps around the kids in the neighborhood high schools, so that they have the supports that they need to be able to concentrate, even if we do do a better job on curricula, or once we do a better job on curricula? So they would be the suggestions I would have for our council agenda, and I really appreciate the time to be able to offer that with you.
Thank you. Excellent panel. Thank you very much. We still have on this panel Joe Willard and Susan Gobresky.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for inviting us. My name's Joe Willard. I'm vice president for a People's Emergency Center in West Philadelphia. PEC's mission is to nurture families, strengthen neighborhoods, and drive change in West Philadelphia. We have developed over 240 units of housing. We have five educational centers, which offer employment training, parenting, early education, financial education, and more. At any one time, we have 52 families who will be sleeping in shelter tonight, and that's about 120 children will be staying with us tonight. We've also developed about 135 units of permanent supportive housing for parents who have a chronic condition. With this work, PEC seeks to strengthen the social capital that the families need to prosper. I'm also chair of the Philadelphia Continue of Care Advisory Committee, and I won't read my whole testimony here, I'll just go over the highlights, but I was also co-chair of the state Pennsylvania Department of Education's Homeless Task Force that was disbanded a couple of years ago. I'm here to speak about children and youth who experience homelessness in the context of education here in Philadelphia. The first thing I just want to stress is that we don't know how many children are homeless either in the school district or even in Philadelphia, mostly because there's two federal definitions of homelessness, and it's very difficult to get the education system to talk to the homeless system on this because of that. However, the school district does put out a report that you have to spend a lot of time finding. We know that every year for the last 10 years, there's been approximately anywhere from 4,500 to 5,000 students who experience homelessness throughout the year. All of this, even the school district, believes this is a low count, and it's mostly because of the way the counting system is regulated by the federal government, unfortunately. The Philadelphia Office of Supportive Services, Office, I'm sorry, Philadelphia Office of Supportive Services serves some 4,000 children in transitional housing, emergency housing here in Philadelphia. And the third way that we know about homeless students is, comes from the Philadelphia School District's Youth Risk Behavioral Survey, which is taken every other year, is given to high school students, and we know that one of the numbers shows that there are 3,000 teenagers who either get kicked out, abandoned, or run away throughout, at some point through that school year. We have a little bit of understanding of academic achievement from homeless students. We know that 29% of the students scored advanced or proficient on the PSSA math exam as compared to 45% of all school district students. This comes from school year 2013, 2014. 29% of homeless students scored advanced or proficient on the PSSA reading exam as compared to 42% of all school district students. Homeless 11th graders scored lower on that than the overall school district student body in the all-three Keystone exams. An area of concern for us is the very low numbers of homeless children in high-quality early childhood programs. According to the Pennsylvania Office of Child Development and Early Learning, there were, in Philadelphia, according to their numbers, only 27 homeless children in Head Start Supplemental Programs, and there were 30 homeless children in the Pennsylvania pre-K counts programs here in Philadelphia. So what should city council focus on if they're concerned about homeless children and youth? We know that homelessness is expensive. One study a couple of years ago showed that a homeless child in Philadelphia is costing about $33,000 annually. And we know that uneducated young adults cost even more. Children experiencing homelessness are also more likely than their peers, who evidence poor educational well-being. Local and national research demonstrates that children who have experienced homelessness have lower academic achievement. For instance, a local study found that children who entered emergency housing for the first time as infants and toddlers performed worse on standardized assessments of mathematics, reading, and language in science by the end of the second grade than children who do not become homeless. Similarly, other studies have found that children who have experienced homelessness evidence worse social skills and learning behaviors than their peers, and are more likely to be truant and suspended. These differences in social skills exist even after accounting for the influence of poverty. The developmental delays and academic challenges faced by children experiencing homelessness are also associated with increased need for early intervention and special education services. Pregnant mothers who are homeless are less likely to have received adequate prenatal care, and more likely to be young and without a high school degree education. Additionally, children experiencing homelessness are more likely to be born prematurely and at low birth weights than their non-homeless peers, or as research there indicating academic achievement with children who have those types of risk factors. But there are things that are working. Not all homeless children are doing poorly. I will tell you that the school district's Office of Homeless Education does a very good job of supporting students who are in shelter. Most school counselors and teachers do a very courageous job in supporting homeless students, oftentimes taking money out of their own pockets to support the children. Most shelters act as family education centers. They're not just shelters. They provide, besides providing safety and food, they foster positive relationships for the family with community organizations that could support them. Most shelters offer after-school programming, summer camp, parenting programs. They connect the children to high-quality early learning programs. Each shelter has at least one professional staff person who is involved with the children's education work. Children ages zero to five are provided screenings for developmental delays, factors that influence a child's ability to learn and participate and achieve. This effort is actually a nationally-recognized practice where HUD may be requiring all emergency shelters across the country to actually do what we do here in Philadelphia. And most recently, groups that serve homeless youth are beginning to talk about how to collaborate and coordinate, which is not what they're doing right now, but to really focus on homeless teens. In part because the Youth Risk Behavioral Survey is showing that there's two times more homeless youth today than there were five years ago. So some recommendations. If city council is interested, one thing we could ask you to do is to contact the Pennsylvania Department of Education and urge them to accept the recommendations that a statewide task force proposed several years ago. This task force included one of the members of the School Reform Commission, as well as the district's homeless education liaison. Pittsburgh is doing this, they're asking the state to take action, and if Philadelphia could do it, that would be helpful. Two, I would ask city council to investigate the relationship between the School District of Philadelphia and the Office of Supportive Housing, so that the relationship includes actual coordination, data sharing, and collaboration, rather than brief interactions for the purposes of telling their funders that they actually have a relationship. Number three, I would suggest that you pay attention to the fact that half of all homeless children are between the ages of zero and five, the most developmentally important part of their lives. Starting even before birth, these children are more likely than their non-homeless peers to experience an array of challenges that I've already mentioned. Four, in my opinion, the Philadelphia Office of Supportive Housing would benefit if you would increase their staffing to afford one full-time staff person who would be responsible for improving how providers serve children and youth and their educational needs. Number five, the city does not have a plan to end family or child homelessness, and certainly no plan to address educational inadequacies of homeless children. They do have a plan for ending veterans homelessness, they do have a plan for ending chronic homelessness next year. These are mostly supported through federal resources and, as well as private foundations. However, if you do get a plan, there, I would assume that most folks will come together and improve coordination and collaboration. Finally, if you really want to help homeless students, make sure schools have counselors, social workers, nurses, librarians, mentors, and other caring adults who support teachers and parents, and finally, after-school activities like music, arts, and sports. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Ms. Gobresky?
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Susan Gobresky with Education Voters of Pennsylvania. I'm also a parent, Philadelphia resident. One of the reasons that education voters and parents in general work so hard on funding and resources is because we believe that organizations that are deprived of the appropriate and adequate resources, much like people, are not only doing without, but start to operate from a deficit perspective, which can contribute to dysfunctional operation. It affects not just what decisions can be made, but the quality of those decisions. One of the things I'd like to thank city council for is the resources that have been increased and dedicated over the past several years. Your focus, I think, has really made it clear that this is something that the city of Philadelphia values. I also want to commend you on the recent historic intergovernmental cooperation agreement, and specifically thank Council President Clark, Councilwoman Blackwell. I think more eyes on what's happening will help, and I actually would like to inquire today about an additional opportunity, to ask of you to help create an additional opportunity for meaningful public participation, which I'll get to in a moment, and public accountability. As we know, the biggest priority for schools is actually stability, and then increasing leadership and teaching capacity, and then supporting children. I loved your final recommendation. For example, we need really a complete set of supports for children, we need to start to address the issues of trauma that children are experiencing and the way it affects learning. I do want to summarize a couple of concerns we raised in our testimony at the SRC the other night, because again, more eyes on these problems, I think, helps. First, we believe it's a significant concern, the charter school law and the financial arrangement at the state level creates such an obstacle that there are so many legal issues, structural issues, and the financial landscape for charter schools in relationship to public schools is so uncertain and in conflict, and it is potentially filled with significant problems and threats to the district. While Philadelphia may be a de facto portfolio school district, that is actually not a legitimate model that has been demonstrated to actually help anything, it's not supported by research, and it is not something that we should be pursuing. There are numerous open questions with charter schools, and I do think that charter schools have a role to play. We all have to figure this out, we have to figure out what it looks like at the state level, but given that enrollment caps are up for debate, and that there has been legislation at the state level to take away local authority to make decisions about what kind of school offerings are best at the community, we believe that that is, again, fraught and potentially dangerous. It's opening a Pandora's box. We could approve a Renaissance charter agreement today under one set of conditions, and then those conditions could be challenged or changed tomorrow. The district could lose control of what they thought they had control over. Of significant concern to us is the fact that the district does not have its own internal turnaround model. At some point, we should be looking, you know, a more comprehensive turnaround model beyond just changing staff, that includes an increased set of supports, and we believe that that's a focus. Other issues related to, there's an opportunity cost. When the district is pursuing one thing, because it is so understaffed and strapped resources, it is inherently not pursuing other things, like how do we increase the supports in school, what kind of services can we align? So any time spent on restructuring the district or reorganizing the governance of schools is time spent not on academics or developing leadership capacity. There are issues of process, so we'd like to know why those schools were chosen, by what criteria, by whom, and on what timeline? What work was done on the ground to analyze the challenges and needs of the people in those schools beforehand? And not to mention the recent issues that there have been with engagement. There's an issue of timing. You know, I mean, we may come to the conclusion that there are times that some of these interventions are appropriate, but we really do need more time for the district to roll out a proposal to give people genuine time to react, to come up with different ideas, to negotiate, to hash through things. So there really does need to be a longer time horizon for how we're making decisions about what needs to happen in what schools. The district needs to not put itself in a position where its back is to the wall. Given these factors, we think it's financially, fiscally irresponsible to make the district more vulnerable at this point in an uncertain environment, and under these circumstances, we don't think that authorizing more charters is a strategy to pursue. The other matter we would like to raise is the matters that have been in the paper, the staffing shortage and the source for teachers' contract. Tens of thousands of people have been negatively affected, indeed, the whole school year has been contaminated in ways that affect learning, culture, and well-being for teachers, parents, and children. There are so many problems that have been caused by this. Teachers who should be able to plan and stabilize their own class are doing coverage, you know, as they should in those situations, but it takes away from their ability to actually create the environments that children need. Principals are spending time on this instead of that. Morale is low, people are stressed and frustrated, and children's safety is being compromised. We asked the SRC if there would be a review process and an accountability for the process that resulted in this situation, and we would ask council to join us in that request. These were seemingly avoidable, and we think it's important to know what happened here. If a plan, what I said then, and I'll say again, is that sometimes a plan goes so badly, and a decision has been so badly made that someone needs to resign or be fired for it. So, thank you. Our final request, and this is where I started, we need a better mechanism for authentic public participation in the governance of the state-controlled school district of Philadelphia. Education voters has actually circulated a proposal a while ago for a hybrid model of governance that we continue to believe is worth taking a look at. But in addition to that, you guys have stepped up in a couple of ways, and I'm going to ask you to help continue to lead. We're asking, because of city council's unique position to actually engage the SRC and the district, to ask questions and actually compel answers and responses, it is also, therefore, uniquely positioned to provide a mechanism to create more public participation. So we are calling for city council to convene a formal representative body, such as a Citizens Commission comprised of a broader array of stakeholders, who can advise and assist city council in exercising review and oversight of the school district of Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have questions only for Mr. Hardy, so everybody else on the panel, thank you very much. And the next panel, I just have a few questions for him. Hannah Sassiman, Media Mobilizing Project, Carol Van Gora, Schools Without Borders, Liz Haver, Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools, Carol Klimnik, Alliance of Philadelphia Public Schools, and Ron Whitehorn, Philadelphia Coalition, advocating for public schools. I thank everybody, and Carl Moore, I thought you were gone, sorry. We'll get everybody in the next panel, and we'll let you go. Thank you, thank you. We wanted to ask you for boys- We wanted to ask you for boys of Latin. What your matriculation rates are, a couple of questions about that. What are your matriculation rates? What are your graduation rates? And the whole issue of persistence, how you see that?
Well, our graduation rate, as stated in the school performance profile, is 95%.
My goodness.
Eighty-six percent of all of our graduates have matriculated to college. Eighty percent of that eighty-six percent have gone to four-year colleges. And I think that's an important point because college matriculation, when they give those numbers out, that's for everything, whether you go to Harvard or barber school. And the fact is, is that we need to keep track of how many kids we're sending to four-year colleges and how many are graduating. You see the mayor, that's been his thing. I mean, everybody knows that. You can't be economically viable without that. So, for persistence, which is who goes back for a second year, we have 80% persistence. And of the boys who go to four-year colleges, our persistence rate is 85%.
That is phenomenal.
Thank you.
And how does that compare with other open admissions? And with whom do you compete?
Well, we beat all the neighborhood schools, all the open-admission schools, all the citywide schools. The only selective-admission schools that have a higher matriculation rate than us, at least this is for the latest data that we have, which is 2013, was Central and Masterman. And we believe we send more African-American boys to college than any school in this region. And we believe that come May, we're going to have, we're going to be a school that has the most African-American males graduating from college.
How in the world do you produce these great results?
Well, it's a couple of things. We have a strict college-going culture. So, from the door, it's about, you got to go to college, and this is why. We take them on college visits. We have college counselors come in and speak to our students. So, they know that's the end game. The other thing is, we push our guys to kind of work beyond what they can do. We give them a lot of homework, you know, and probably more homework than they should have, but the fact is, we want to get them used to a heavy workload. And then, and Latin creates a real bar because you can't pass Latin if you don't study, if you don't, if you don't memorize the words. You have to know what you're doing, and you have to spend time with Latin, or you won't do well at it. So, Latin kind of gives us that bar right at the door. And then, finally, for the college retention, and retention is more than persistence. Retention is who stays at the same school year after year after year. And the National Student Clearinghouse says retention is how they judge whether a college is doing well, holding on to their students, and I agree with that. But I also know this, retention is also a credit to how well the student is helped to select the right school. If you don't go to the wrong, if you don't go to the right school, you're not going to stay there. So, that whole idea of looking at a broad range of schools, narrowing your choices down, and picking the right one, that's very important to the success of the student in college, and that's the kind of things we do.
Given your accomplishments, has a charter office asked you to expand?
No, they have not. You know, actually, I wrote this down. Somebody was, I think it was, I think it was Ms. Cooper, who said that we need to be intentional about education. I'm not sure where the charter office gets that. Intentional means that you have to have schools to serve the specific needs of the kids that are in the neighborhoods and in the communities that we serve, and that can't be a one-size-fits-all thing. And as Ms. Cooper said, you can't judge every school the same way. Just like if you have two kids, you can't, you can't judge your own two kids the same way. And anymore, you've got more ways to judge. So, for them to think that they can have one standard to judge Masterman and Bartram, that's just not right. They don't have the same resources. They don't have the same preparation in their kids. You can't judge them the same way. So, if we had a charter school office that could understand that, I think that would be more helpful, not just us, but everybody in the city.
Thank you. Thank you for the phenomenal job you do as well and your commitment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Hannah, Carol, Liz, Carol, and Ron Whitehorn, come forward. Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience. And after them, we'll have Karen Gordon, if you're still here, Citywide Youtharama, Vivian Rodriguez, Luis Munoz, Martin Score, Carl Mora, Elisa Dorsey, Red Hen Exploring, and Mike Reed. And if there's someone else, I see a few people have come in. We welcome you at our next panel. Thank you very much. Thank you, Hannah. Please begin.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Blackwell and to everyone who's here. My name is Hannah Sassiman, and I am the Policy Director at the Media Mobilizing Project in your district. And we're a 10-year-old community organization that works across the city to train low-income people to tell the stories that end poverty. And I've submitted written testimony. I want to summarize to a certain extent to allow other folks to speak. We have a long history in digital inclusion, and the point I want to make today is that access to technology, to Internet access and tech education inside our schools is a core component of our children's ability to learn and to graduate and to thrive in our communities. In a city with the highest rate of deep poverty in the United States, our students are struggling to access the Internet at all, both inside the school building and at home. According to a study of U.S. Census records done by the Inquirer in March of this year, Philly has the third-worst broadband access of any big city in the United States, where it's only 64%. And there's a clear correlation between the lack of Internet access and poverty in the homes that don't have it. So, at MMP, we're focusing deeply on expanding students' access to Internet at home as a part of a campaign we're focused on, as we've discussed, asking Comcast, as part of their next 15-year deal with the city, to sell cable to do a large expansion of that service. But today, I'm going to focus inside the school building on the lack of computer and technology education inside our schools, which Dr. Height touched on a bit in his testimony. So, access to computers and technology education is directly correlated with higher education or with graduation rates, according to Dr. Matthew Lynch, who wrote about this last year in Education Week. The Alliance for Excellent Education, partnering with the Stanford Center for Opportunity Policy in Education, also released a study last year showing that strong gains and achievement occur when you pair technology with classroom teachers who provide real-time support and encouragement to those underserved students. But investigations into the technology education resources at the Philadelphia School District show huge disparities in hardware access and in tech education access. In a report released in 2014 studying IT benchmarks for 40 urban school districts, these are all members of the Council of Great City Schools, the Philly School District ranked second from the bottom in the average age of their computers. And we heard Dr. Height say that we have sometimes 10-plus-year-old computers in those schools. Our average across the district is five years old or more, and a computer's useful life is generally assumed to expire after five years. So, everyone has an old computer. While the Philadelphia School District has a very, very fast and robust wireless network, they have great Internet access. That's not what they need. There aren't enough computers available for students and teachers to use that network as a part of classroom education. The CIO of the district, Melanie Harris, had said in a report by the Public School Notebook that the information highway, the road, is wide, but there aren't that many cars on it. There are not enough computers in classrooms as we would like and not enough newer models. The most important point I want to make today is staffing. Staffing is a huge problem for maintaining our computers and in providing tech education. We have only seven IT specialists servicing 218 schools and 270 school buildings across the district. Schools are able to designate a teacher to serve as a technology teacher leader that supports the computers and the education. But right now, we have, you know, our substitute problem is so huge that those technology teacher leaders don't have time to support the computers. They're teaching other people's classes. And so, that's, the relationship between all of the systemic issues and the lack of tech education couldn't be clearer than that. These are solvable problems, which is why we're focusing on supporting the City of Philadelphia and city council in their negotiation with Comcast for our next 15-year franchise agreement. As you know, in order to reach our homes and businesses, Comcast uses our taxpayer-funded city streets and our utility poles to put their cables down, providing everyone with Internet and television in the city that uses those services, but they only reimburse the city just for the cable portion. So, they don't actually pay us back for the lines that we lay, or we let them lay for Internet, which is where most of their profits come from. And that's why our coalition, which includes the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers, student groups like the Philly Student Union and Youth United for Change, the PCAP Coalition, is pushing that council not grant Comcast a new franchise unless they commit to tech education, to funding it in our public schools. They earned over $8 billion in profits last year. They made over $500 million in revenue in Philly alone last year, and I have citations for all of this in the testimony. We're going to have time over the next weeks to discuss Comcast's potential impact for our residents, including our students and teachers, so I don't want to belabor that point. But the final note I'll make is, is that as we're examining the health and future of our schools at the same time as we examine the future of communications access in the city, this is a once-in-a-lifetime shot. Like, this is going to be the last chance in 15 years we get to have this conversation at the same time. So, I want to paint the picture of the relationship between the two, which I know we'll be discussing over the next weeks and months, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Thank you for your commitment. Ms. Van Gora, pleasure.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Blackwell.
Good afternoon.
I'm here on behalf of Schools Without Borders. Schools Without Borders, from the year 2010 through 2013, '14 school year, we provided culturally and linguistically appropriate services to immigrant African and Caribbean students within the School District of Philadelphia. Since then, the funding has been cut, and our students are in need of services. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the School District of Philadelphia is facing an unprecedented challenge in serving students in our community. As an immigrant from Sierra Leone, I can attest that we're arriving in the city in droves. We're coming from diverse countries, speaking multiple languages, and yet our immigrant identities, unlike our Hispanic and Asian counterparts, are not being realized. African-born and first-generation American children of African descent are enrolling in district schools in areas that lack experience and/or infrastructure to assist us in helping the students by providing culturally and linguistically appropriate services to learn the English language and adapt to their new schools or neighborhoods. With varying degrees of unrest, violence, poverty in our host countries of birth, immigrant students need, that are enrolled in the School District of Philadelphia schools, I'm sorry, they're enrolling at school district schools in alarming rates. This has tremendous implications for program development, curriculum funding, specifically Title I and Title III funding. The Office of Multilingual Curriculum Programs within the school district, they provide services to immigrant families. They provide new student registration packets in 26 languages other than English, and most of those languages do not represent our languages. Statistically, immigrants and language minorities, English-language learners, are among the fastest-growing populations in the United States in public schools. The Urban Institute finds that their children enrolled in kindergarten through 12th grade that are composed of children of immigrants, including both foreign-born and U.S.-born children with foreign parents, have more than tripled from 6% to 20% between the years of 1970 and 2000. Predictions estimate that by the year 2015, current immigration levels, children, I'm sorry, children of immigrants will constitute 30% of the nation's school population. The number of students lacking English proficiency has also increased dramatically. The languages spoken within our communities, I'm sorry, within English proficient students, 79% Spanish, 2% Vietnamese, 1.6% Cantonese, Korean, 1%, and approximately 5 million LEP students are enrolled in grades pre-K through 12, and it has more than doubled. With current Title I and Title III funds totaling millions of dollars that are allocated from the congressional level and trickles down to the School District of Philadelphia, these funds are not inclusive of African students in a manner equal to our similarly-situated counterparts. Existing data suggests that immigrant and children of immigrants fare well, yet African students are facing unique challenges related to language proficiency, cultural and social adaption, and poverty. Newly arriving immigrants from Anglophone and Francophone countries struggle to learn English and catch up to their native English-speaking peers and do poorly on standardized tests. Dropout rates are significantly higher for immigrants and for the LEP youth. African students are subjected to bullying and name-calling based on their countries of origin at alarming rates, particularly in schools located in low-social-economic-backed communities. African students who have mastered English often experience family role reversal when they are called on to serve as translators and interpreters for family interactions in school. One in four children live in an immigrant family. Their parents often work multiple jobs or shift work to support such families, which drains the time available to supervise the children and assist with homework or school activities. District of school, district school officials and staff, it also results in minimal interactions. On behalf of myself, an African immigrant who is subjected to circumstances articulated in my testimony, along with counterparts, along with my counterparts from countries such as Sierra Leone, Liberia, Senegal, Mali, Gambia, and Guinea, who speak languages such as Creole, Mandingo, Timoney, Mende, Sosu, Kankaw, we definitely implore the School District of Philadelphia and the city council to invest Title I and Title III funds to provide culturally and linguistically appropriate services for our African community, the children, the parents in schools through parental outreach, ESL training and after-school programs. A final recommendation that I may add is that the School District and the city council create a community-based participatory project so that the education and integration needs of our diverse community can be explored, determined, and the equitable funding can be created. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all that you do for the African and Caribbean community. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Blackwell. My name is Lisa Haver. I'm a retired Philadelphia middle school teacher, co-founder of the Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools. I want to thank you for being here
Thank you.
and listening to members of the community as well as representatives from the school district. Members of our alliance attend all SRC meetings and have attended most since that body was inflicted upon our city. Apps members, thank you, Council President Clark, and counsel on your success in garnering real oversight over the financial activity of the school district. When we ask questions, we rarely get answers. We hope that atrocities like spending tens of thousands of dollars on lawyers from outside firms, including nine alone representing the district in its efforts to fight having at least one counselor per school, will end when there is true public oversight. Oversight should take place in public by public officials, not in the boardrooms of the Philadelphia School Partnership or the William Penn Foundation or other corporate partners. Earlier this month, Superintendent William Height proposed a number of radical changes to be enacted in only 15 of the district's over 200 schools. At a price tag of $15 to $20 million, we have to be sure that these reforms are ones that have been successful in other schools. Actually, just the opposite is true. Dr. Height wants to place three more neighborhood schools into the Renaissance program, which means handing them over to a charter company. When you're run by a charter company, you're a charter school. A quick perusal of the latest PSSA score, a metric used by Dr. Height for school turnarounds, shows that none of the current Renaissance schools are anything close to achieving at the levels promised by the charter company who took them over. As I stated in my op-ed in today's Daily News, quote, "Dr. Height cites reading and math proficiency scores" scores which hover around 30% as justification for placing three more schools into the Renaissance program." But the latest PSSA scores show that none of the 21 current elementary or middle Renaissance schools achieved a math score of over 20%, and only eight top 30% in reading. Three have come up for non-renewal proceedings in this past year alone. The school performance rating of Auden Reid High School placed in Renaissance program in 2011 was among the lowest in the state. I don't call that a success. The Height administration knows very well that this is not what parents or communities want. When parents at two schools, Steele and Munoz Marin, were given a choice last year, they voted overwhelmingly to stay in the public school system. This time, therefore, parents are not given a vote. The decision has already been made. Teachers and other staff have no say in the process at all. They've already been shut out. Dr. Height intends to spend some of the $20 million to open a new high school and a new middle school. How does the district justify this when existing schools are literally crumbling? Solace Cone Elementary in the Northeast had to relocate students last month because a building engineer discovered that the school was not structurally sound. Principals who should be observing teachers and creating a sound learning environment in their schools are acting as secretaries and nurses. Harding Middle School still has not one secretary. There are fewer than 10 certified librarians in the entire district. Staffing shortages mean that many IEPs of students with special needs are being violated, leaving the district vulnerable to lawsuits. As testified to at the SRC last week, a third grader, an eight-year-old at Francis Scott Key Elementary, survived by luck alone because the school nurse just happened to be in the building once she went into cardiac arrest. Why would the Height administration pay to rent new schools or building costs for new schools? Where is the equity? We're hearing today all about partnerships and technology, but here's my question. Can the kids who are sitting on the window sill see the smartboard? Bieber Middle School was saved from closing when the community rallied around in 2013 on the condition that the building housed a separate school. Now they're on the closure list again, even though Dr. Height told us there would be no school closures. Rather than invest in the school, they invested in the school which was co-located in the building. This is a cruel trick on the parents, students, and teachers who thought their school was As we have watched these so-called reforms unfold over the past three years, the turnovers, the charterizations, the redesigns, the transformations, the closures, it seems as if there's no recognition that schools at every level are built on relationships between children and adults, whether teacher, principal, librarian, or custodian. It's devastating to have a neighborhood school close. It's devastating for children to come back in September and not know any of the adults. It is devastating for teachers to become part of a school community, to know siblings and families, sometimes for two generations, and then be forced out for no reason. Where is the stability in that plan? Parents will have very little to say about what happens to their children's schools this time around. A seven-person panel with four district employees and only three parents chosen by the district is meaningless. Teachers and staff who are covering the classes left empty in the substitute outsourcing debacle and spending their own money on books and supplies are going to be shut out. The latest plan by Dr. Height is based on already failed strategies. The Renaissance program is a failure, no matter how you look at it, by the abysmal test scores or how many Renaissance schools have already come up for non-renewal. The Height administration knows what real reforms are and should be investing in them. Smaller class size, a library in every school, evidence-based reading programs, full-time nurses and counselors in every school, enough custodians so that children can learn in clean, safe buildings, art, music, electives, and replacing that test prep curriculum and allowing creativity and innovation in all schools, not just the ones in designated innovative networks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haber. Thank you for always being here and being on the right side of issues.
Thank you.
You're a good person. Thank you. Carol and Mr. Whitehorn. Added to our last panel will be Mama Gail and Bernard Johnson.
I think Mama Gail left.
She left? Okay.
I don't see her here.
I see everybody knows her.
Yeah, right. Kind of thinning audience.
Out there in the hardcore.
Really, thinning out here. Well, good afternoon, Councilwoman Blackwell, and everyone who's still left. My name is Carol Klimnick. I'm the other co-founder of the Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools. I'm a retired kindergarten teacher and a proud member of the PFT. I want to first commend city council for negotiating a deal with the district to withhold $25 million until the district stops outsourcing jobs. City council, at this point, seems to be the only funding source that wants to hold the district accountable, and that's commendable. I just want to comment on some of Dr. Height's remarks. His remarks included the lack of resources. Knowing that, he's still spent $34 million on source for teachers, and he's preparing to spend $15 million to $20 million on his new plan. That's a lot of money for when he just acknowledged that he has a lack of resources. Where does the money come from? Now, Dr. Height claims to be giving 5,000 students a chance to go to a better school. How disingenuous of him. If he really wanted those 5,000 students going to a better school, his Budget and Action Plan 3.0 would reflect more resources going directly into classrooms instead of the millions being spent on outsourcing. Why is he fighting giving outside law firms more money, negotiating a fair contract with the PFT? Why did he just squander $34 million on source for teachers? Why doesn't every school have a full-time nurse? Is he waiting for the next child to die because there is no full-time nurse? I am sharing Jerry Rosman's commentary in the Public School Notebook with you because it addresses a fundamental issue that the superintendent is destroying. The issue is providing for every student, not a select few. Rosman is an independent environmental science consultant who has assessed conditions in almost all of Philadelphia's public schools on behalf of the PFT. His recommendation is to take that $20 million, Height is dangling before charter operators, and use that money to benefit every student instead of a few. Rosman suggests taking the $20 million Dr. Height is setting aside for the 5,000 students and using that to repair already-existing schools. Our district-run schools are crumbling, as many charter schools are constructing new buildings, or in the case of schools selected to become Renaissance charter schools, having extensive repair work done. Take the Worcester School. A day after the first district-led meeting was scheduled, contractors were given a site tour of the Worcester building as they bid on almost $3 million of repairs to the plant. Why wasn't this work done before the district decided to turn the school over to a charter management firm? Worcester is one of three schools due to become a Renaissance charter school. I've been attending the district-led meetings for the Worcester School community. They're farce. District staff are there to sell Renaissance charter schools. They even bring in charter school parents to help them sell this idea. Their stories are compelling, but this is not the point. Parents should have the opportunity to make an informed choice. The district learned from Steele and Munoz Marin schools, the parents do not want their schools turned over to a charter school operator. They want to remain in the district. Thus, they don't get a choice this time around. As to Dr. Height's claims that those three schools were targeted because of their climate, at both meetings I attended, Worcester parents expressed their love and respect for teachers and their principal, as well as for the climate at Worcester. At both meetings I attended, parents wanted to know why that extra money promised to a charter school operator cannot be given to their school now. The principal at Worcester said that her school made AYP from 2008 until 2011, when she lost resources. Parents had so many questions about preschool availability, special ed services, teachers being forced out and losing their principal, students being forced out, students not being able to attend the school in their neighborhood. The district staff had no student, no answers. They were there to sell, not to listen. I suggest you attend one of these meetings to speak with parents, teachers, and community members. Come to the next SRC meeting on Thursday, November 19th. You probably read the articles from last week's SRC meeting that recorded the outrage. The district and the SRC both need to be monitored. Our organization, the Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools, attends every meeting. We have a series called Eyes on the SRC that lists some of the most egregious resolutions. The SRC is spending millions on outside legal fees, private consultants, and now that $34 million again, on the incompetent source for teachers. It's a lot of money to spend when you claim to be penniless and cannot provide a counselor and a nurse in every school. I really wonder, how did Source for Teachers get the contract? What are their connections at work here? I also had a question for you. I brought in copies of the article from the notebook. Would I be able to leave them for city council members on the Education Committee? Is that okay? Okay, thanks.
Thank you as well.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Blackwell. I appreciate the opportunity to testify. My name is Ron Whitehorn. I'm a retired teacher, a parent of two children who attended neighborhood public schools, and I currently work as the coordinator for the Philadelphia Coalition Advocating for Public Schools, which is a coalition of educators, parents, students, and community-based organizations. Like others, I'm here to speak against the attempt of the school district to turn over three elementary schools to charter companies, and I also want to speak in favor of community schools, I think a much superior strategy for trying to help our struggling schools. I'm not going to go through my whole testimony in the interest of time. I'll try to hit some of the high points. I think it's interesting that the school district's own research shows that the majority of the charter school operators who got Renaissance schools have failed to meet their objectives spelled out in their contracts. That's their own study. At two schools, Blueford and Douglas, the district chose not to renew Universal and Young Scholars, respectively, as operators. At one school, Bernie, the operator for the for-profit Mosaic Company went bankrupt, so they turned it over to another charter company. Aspira, another favored company, is under a cloud with all sorts of unanswered questions about financial mismanagement, as well as poor academic performance. In evaluating the first seven district schools that were handed over in 2010, all of them have been flagged for serious shortcomings: poor academic performance, failing to support English-language learners and special education students, or financial mismanagement. 2,000 more families could see their schools turned around for a second time in five years. So that's the track record we're dealing with. It's not this castle in the sky that we've been told. In addition, as people have pointed out, the process is grossly undemocratic. It's a sham process. It's like picking between, do you want breast cancer or colon cancer, as far as I'm concerned? That's the choice parents are being offered. And I've been out there. Our coalition has been working with parents. We've been circulating a petition. 95% of the people have signed a petition opposing this process and favoring that the schools be developed as community schools. And it's interesting that the district talks a lot about innovation, but they never talk about community schools, which is an option with an actual track record of success. Community schools is an approach to education that focuses on the whole child, addressing the obstacles to learning rooted in systemic racism and poverty. A common feature of community schools is the provision of wraparound services at the school that can meet the physical, emotional, and social needs of children and their families. Community schools have things like eye, dental, and mental health providers, after-school programs, adult education, English as a second language, and job training. Typically, a full-time coordinator works to build relationships with community agents to provide these services on-site. Community schools, as we envision them, are democratic institutions, and I was around during the time Walt Palmer talked about the struggle for community control in our city. I was an active supporter of that, and I believe community schools, as we envision them, embed those values of real democratic control by parents and the community, which historically, communities of color have been denied. Community schools exist in dozens of cities across the country. They're currently being developed on a large scale in New York and Baltimore. Cincinnati has had an extensive program for over a decade. The investment in community schools has produced dramatic gains in the graduation rate, which jumped from 50% to 80% in Cincinnati. In three years during that period, the rate for black students, the graduation rate for black students, actually exceeded those for whites. Transformative community schools also emphasize engaging curriculum as opposed to the test-driven instruction, and also restorative practices instead of punitive discipline. We're clear that community schools aren't a silver bullet. They can be the schools our children deserve, but that means we have to realize the promise of the Brown decision to provide quality education for all. It means that we have to have equitable funding, as well as rolling back the harmful mandates that overemphasize testing and punish school communities instead of supporting them. These fights have to continue, but community schools provide a framework for improving our schools right now, as well as a foundation on which the fight for further transformational change can be waged. So I'll end there, and I hope I'm pleased that council, Council President Clark, has taken an active interest in the whole community schools concept. Mayor Kenny has endorsed 25 new community schools. We're going to be working with him and with council to support that. Of course, the devil's in the details. We have to have a dialogue about what that means, how they're governed, how it's funded, but certainly this is a new chapter, and I wish Dr. Height would wake up and smell the coffee and join the dialogue instead of just pushing the same stale, failed solutions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you all. Thank you very much. This is our last panel as well. So those who would like to testify, Carl, I see you're close. I saw Bernard. I think Mike Reed left, Mama Gail. Bernard is still here, I assume. Karen Gordon left. Vivian Rodriguez. Is she here, or did she leave? Good. Monica Yellock? That's good for my Huey school. We love Huey. Alicia Dorsey, are you here? Okay. All righty, we will assume anybody here who wants to testify is either sitting at the table or in the front chairs. Thank you. Thank you all for your patience, and God bless you. Sorry, Mr. Moore.
Thank you very much, Councilperson.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see the rest of your colleagues abandoned you, as usual, which I have no respect for them. They hear me, and they know me. This is an important meeting, I consider it to be. Three and a half years ago, I came here to city council, and I informed them about Dr. Height. I informed them about his whereabouts, where he came from, and what he was all about. I informed you that when he closed 25 schools or more, that he's still going to close more. He swore up and down, he played his hand upon the Bible, whatever it is y'all want to say, and he stated the fact is that this will solve the educational problem here in Philadelphia. He's also stated the fact is we're $100 million short. I say it was $100 million. short. I say it was 300 million dollars. I sent notices of information to every member of city council, and I told them that Dr. Height don't give too good about city councils and that you don't count with him. And he's shown it in each and every way. Now that all the time's gone by, we're going to take just a review of what's been going on. Dr. Height went off to make a showmanship. When he came here to this town, he gave everybody down here on Broad Street a raise. If we were so poor, and he knew this situation, how we was, why would he give a raise? He also went about the business the same when he found out, when he so-called found out he was helping the district. He said he was taking a cut in salary, okay? He took a cut for six months and then wanted his money back, and the cut stopped. This man is a liar. I told you he was a liar. I had the good advice from the people from Prince George County, which at one time was a model city partnership here in this country, and those people I had developed a relationship with them, they said, thank God he's gone. God bless you, Philadelphia, for taking him. And everything about him has been coming true. This man has constantly, constantly, through his efforts, because he's not your friend. Dr. Height is a part of a conspiracy of group of millionaires who are about the business of shutting down public schools and making them a general contract. It's proven. This group of people have been giving money in the politics of elections and all. Maybe those people who are not here in the city council, maybe they took some of his money, too. They know who I am and all. But getting back to it, to show you how it is, he told members of city council something that he wasn't going to do. Then he made another statement when they asked him to commit, make him commit to something. He wouldn't commit. That means you don't count. He knows that. He knows you can't do nothing to him. City council, in this new election coming up, the citizens of Philadelphia have told you, gave the God-given right, get rid of the board. Don't get rid of him because he gonna make you pay for the contract, okay? He also, I told you back then that he was going to try to get rid of the union. Didn't he go do it? And then by the city council back then, to old Carmore, he just lying. Am I the liar? It looks like they're a bunch of damn fools, okay? I give you the most greatest thing that ever happened here in the city of Philadelphia, when the Pope came. That young black boy stood up there and sang. They brought all the nation with his voice. But he came from a school that shut down the music program. There's one of those antiquated schools that didn't do anything, poverty schools are. Didn't he sing wonderful? It just shows the tower's been wasted not long. Dr. Height took away all the nurses. He sit up here today and said, well, we put nursing two days a week. So nurse here Monday and Tuesday. Hey, if you get sick on Wednesday, you tough out of luck. But if you come there on Wednesday and Thursday, then guess what? You should have been here Monday and Tuesday, other schools. What I'm saying about the $35 million, the most ridiculous thing, and no one in city council stated it. He gave $35 million to somebody to go out there and find teachers. Do we not have HR in the public school system? Do we not have, don't they, do we not have that in city government where you put the advertising on, go get teachers and all? City council stood by and let him do it. You fellow city councilmen, the men, what I'm saying to you, where's your balls? You lost them. He also turned around and hired four assistants from Adam. One of them got a reputation and takes people on potty buses and things like that, potty and things like that. Hey, maybe I should be a friend. Maybe I should have stopped attacking Dr. Height. I could be a potty person, too. The charter schools, when one of those charter schools had decided to go against him and bucked him, he shut it down. But what was most more impressive with Walt Palmer, and we all know Walt Palmer, they shut it down in the middle of a school season. Those, he couldn't wait till June, get those parents them, chance to have a go on, and he told them he care about my kids. No, you don't care about my kids. You don't care about my friends and all. He shut it down. We didn't do nothing. No one in city council, except you, Councilperson. The rest of them, y'all sitting in your rooms up there, you stabbers, getting ready to go home. Tell them what Carmore said. You're a bunch of goddamn bums. We got nurses. Let me tell you about one of the contract, what I found out. In my investigation, I found out that the school board gives out contractors to low bidders. Certain person will be there and take the low bid. That little bid person comes back and say, this ain't enough money. We can do it with it. Dr. Height and them provide money for that little bit of contract make up. So buddy, buddy, buddy. Also, I gave this the Audit General Report. It states 50 schools here in the city of Philadelphia is crap, crap. What are we going to do about it, okay? What are we going to do? Everybody, I listen, everybody come up here and talk about it. Listen, everybody come and say something. This has to be done, has to be done, has to be done. I agree with you, but I say this. I got a solution to it. Every teaching institution, university here in the city of Philadelphia, University of Penn, you got the money from the hospital to Bill Brown, something they must done grants, scholarships. La Salle, Temple University, if they all come together and come with the city council, come with the city, we can solve our educational problem. Get Comcast. They love us. They got money. They can set it up. We can do things. We could change this educational system. We got children in here. I cried the last time I was here, when those kids begged city council and everybody, begged the school board to keep their schools open. They cried. They demonstrated there was concern. What the members of city council do, you cracked it. And your parents, you stayed home on your ass. All what I'm saying is the fact is, I got a report here from the Attorney General. I got other reports stating that this, this man hires people consultants. He's not your employee. He's the employee of those individuals who decide to take a drop of taxpayer's dollars into Philadelphia, what's that, Philadelphia Foundation, the group right there, and they drop money in there. How I really learned to find out about this is through the last superintendent, and this was before I had any cause of it. She told me prior, when she was going to the problems room, that hey, I hope I'm with, that she said they told her she had to shut down 35 schools. The mayor of the city of Philadelphia knew that the new superintendent wanted to shut down schools, you little chump. I swear to God. When are the people of Philadelphia going to wake up to this? This is madness. We're constantly going through things. We get cigarette taxes. We get money here and there. Last time we got a little bit of cigarette money taxes on, Dr. Height said, I want my money back. I'm going to be able to get my money back. And people talking about getting minimum bonus. And Bill Green Jr. III, his grandfather's probably turning over in the grave behind the fact that he helped want to bust the union. I know his daddy is. We're talking about people. Councilperson, I stayed, and I'm sick. I'm blind and when I had to go get a caloric operation messed up and all, but I stayed because I wanted to preach today, and I want to thank you. And God knows, please don't die. Stay alive, because we damn sure need you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
If you need a, I left a copy of that Audit General Report to show where the 50 schools are and all. Did y'all give it to her? Here, here.
They're running a copy.
I got them jumping down, Councilperson.
Okay.
And any other reports, any other members of city council who's sitting in the office right now? I got more reports on Dr. Height. Consultant contracts and all, it's like that. He hires him as a consultant, then hire him on the board. You must remember, this man took a man from Prince George County who was
Thank you.
embezzler for Prince George County. He took money. He was an auditor. He was a captain for them. And he brought, he then went to jail in Prince George County. Dr. Height brought him here in Philadelphia. So no, you don't know what Dr. Height is still now. He's probably good as a crackhead. He's gone, too. Everybody else can say whatever it is. Ladies, I'm sorry to take a bit of time, but I'm going to go home now, because my wife is
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay, who's going next? Thank you, too. Thank you. Who's next? Let's go.
You want me to go next? I'll go next.
All right.
Okay. My name is Vivian Rodriguez, a retired special education teacher, 30 years of experience. And for the past five, seven years, I've been a volunteer and a community member of the Luis Muñoz Marine School. I am here to object to Dr. Height's recommendation to turn three schools, Cook, Worcester, and Huey, into Renaissance charters during the academic year 2016-17. Just like everyone else, on September 30th, October 1st, we read the news. The district also plans to expand its slate of neighborhood schools run by charter operators through the Renaissance Initiative. J. Cook Logan, Samuel B. Huey West Philadelphia, and John Worcester Germantown. Elementary schools are recommended for Renaissance conversion in 2016-17. The district lasts additional Renaissance conversion in 2014, when it gave parents at Edward Steele and Luis Muñoz Marine schools, I was there, Luis Muñoz Marine, the ability to choose who it wanted to run the school, the district or the charter. Parents at both schools voted for the district to retain control. This year, the district intends to revert back to the old Renaissance model through which the conversion is predetermined, and the parents get to choose between an array of operators, and actually, I added, the get-to-choice part is not even accurate. Parents did not receive any documentation regarding the selection process, like you mentioned, including which other schools were considered or the criteria used to choose these three particular schools. The press release stated the school district seeks to continue the Renaissance charter schools initiative to transform chronically underperforming school. And Dr. Height said, this is an exciting step forward in achieving our mission of having great schools in every neighborhood. This recommendation address parental demand for better academic programs in safe, familiar environments while presenting rigorous and engaging opportunities for students. And as far as I checked, parents of Cook, Huey, and Wisters are not demanding to become Renaissance charters. They demand fair funding and a fair chance. Well, as far as I know, the school district of Philadelphia uses all this data that they have, the SPRP, Progress Report, similar to the Pennsylvania SPP, the School Performance Profile, and they are similar because they are both based on the PSSA standardized test scores. Now, the fact that at least 60% of our schools right here in Philadelphia, including Renaissance charters, are in the red, according to the Pennsylvania SPP, that's a score below 60, 60 being a D, and the academic portion of the school district of Philadelphia SPR of the majority of schools in the intervene, are in the intervene and watch range. Not too many schools are academically rated as model schools. So why Cook? Why Huey? Why Worcester? We don't know. Parents were not told. The school district is trying to convince them that their children's schools are the only three schools chronically underperforming. Now, let's be real. If 60% of our schools are getting an F, a score below 60, then the schools are not failing. The school district of Philadelphia, Dr. Height, and the SRC are failing us. Parents of these three schools were invited to secretly located meetings using a phone call. They needed to call to make a reservation and then receive another call stating the meeting location. As consequence, parents got lost, were late, and just a small group of parents were able to attend. Why can these informational meetings be at their neighborhood schools? Why is the school district of Philadelphia opting for inconveniencing parents instead of making the process easier? They stated that they want to have a small group of parents and, of course, make sure that teachers and community activists like us don't attend these meetings. What a shame that parents, teachers, and community members have to be the one that are advocating for public education. As we all heard, parents were not happy, especially when they were told that they are not getting a chance to vote. The meetings were used as a way to convince parents that Renaissance charters are doing great, but the studies and scores show different. Guess what? Yes, like 60% of our public school scores below 60, for failing academic levels ranging from intervene to watch, not by any definition, model schools. And I can assure you that contrary to what they want parents to believe, the December 2013 report, Renaissance Schools Initiative Progress Report 2010-2011 through 2012-2013, did not find that most Renaissance charters made the expected gains in reading and math. The progress as expected was during the first years, but clearly started a decline in 2012-13. The 2013 and 2014 PSSA and SPP scores for most of the schools with the exclusion, and I'm going to be fair saying this, some of the mastery Renaissance charters decreased even more. Regarding the success of the Renaissance charter schools, Dr. Height couldn't have been more vague giving a statement, even if he tried. Over the past five years, many students at our Renaissance charter schools have made substantial gains in reading and math proficiency, said Dr. Height. Attendance at this school has improved, and serious incidents have dropped. The Renaissance program has rapidly transformed several struggling schools into good schools. Now, the last thing that I want to object is the process timeline and the rush to have everything decided within three months. It's quite concerning. That's exactly what they did at Marine and Steele. Actually, they gave us two months. The clandestine meetings with small groups of parents are set to continue till the end of November. The school district will issue a request of qualification to select potential operators. Then parents will be invited to serve on the formal committee that reviews proposals from potential operators. And finally, Dr. Height will have the final match recommendation to the school district commission in December, and everything will be a done deal by January 2016. And this is all done to better our schools. I just don't see it. One year and four months ago, and I added, who's counting? I am. Parents at Muñoz Marine and Steele had the opportunity to vote and kept their schools public. We live in a democracy, but yet, parents' rights were taken away this time around. This is not right. And I want to add that when you spoke earlier, Councilman Blackwell, you did question why these three schools were picked. Somebody mentioned something about the climate. I checked their school performance profiles, and they're like in the 50s. Even one from 2012-13 to 2014, they went up eight points. The other ones kind of stayed steady. I don't know why they were picked. Climate, if they want to pick somebody for climate, go to the high schools that have to have like Edison, that need to have like nine police officers because they're killing each other there. Send Mastery or any other of the charter operators to turn that school around, okay? But these other schools, what they need is better funds, and if anything, let's go back to what they did at Marine and Steele. The school had to present their plan, then the operator, in our case, was Aspira, presented pants, parents attended the meetings. There were two, three meetings, and then we voted. That's the way you do things in a democracy.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Who's next?
Hello, Councilwoman.
Hi.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Karen Gordon. I'm the director and founder of Citywide Youth Rama Incorporated. I'm here today because my concern is not about the schools, the money. My concern is how we are losing our youth. Our youth self-esteem is Our youth self-esteem has really gone. And this is a proposal that I wanna present to help hopefully improve our youth's social, emotional barriers young people experience in their daily lives. And one of the things that I would like to bring back into our schools is personal hygiene citywide. Um, personal hygiene is needed in our schools to teach our youth how to properly maintain their bodies and cleanliness. As I'm going into these schools, I'm smelling body odors, kids are not really kept up, um, foul language, oral sex is being openly spoken. And the average youth of the day aren't being taught to simply put on deodorant and powder, of course, after bathing and washing up in the morning. From them not caring about theirselves, this is the beginning of low self-esteem and criminal behavior. Secondly, how could we reach out to all these schools to bring this back? There's a large number of public school in the city considering there's always a problem not having funding available. We would use our sources, which is not commonly, which is not common anymore, A, meet with school board president, B, citywide meeting with the schools, C, recruiting students that are qualified to teach personal hygiene to the students such as nurses, medical students, this can be part of their internship. Female interns can speak to our ladies and males can speak to our young men. The need is that it's a high percentage of underprivileged youth coming from homes where sex is open and strong foul language is the norm. Youth starting at the age of seven are using it, foul language in the daily walk openly, talking about oral sex among their friends. They need to be informed on the results of unprotected sex and diseases that result from this. This would also be an opp, opportunity to encourage them not to walk around showing their body parts, boys having their pants hanging, showing their undergarments and from them constantly pulling them up that throughout the day, touching their undergarments, this is very unsanitary. Also leaving germs on public transportation, sitting on seats in their undergarments, touching the seats that other people have to sit on. I see them walking into school past guards, no one says anything. They should be forgetting to come to, into the school with their undergarments showing. How can we do it? Have a guard at all entrances as they come in, make them put, pull up their pants. At first, some will give you a hard time, especially parents, but when we make an example and show we are serious about the fact, we'll start to sink in. Now, and of course, when they go around the corner, the pants will drop again, but in the long run, when they're going on an interview, they will automatically pull them up from being corrected. Secondly, strong foul language is mentally abusive and causing emotional distress. Youth need to be taught how to tame and train their tongue in appropriate language. I think about a group of girls walking from school one day, elementary, as I'm standing there as an adult, the conversation was, I can't even repeat it. Then, these girls was eight to ten years old. It didn't matter, I was standing there. I think about a nine-year-old boy I corrected in the park, he proudly said to me, "You can't do nothing to me." The sad part about it, he said, it proudly. Now, can you imagine teachers who have to hear this language day in and day out and all they can do is really nothing? Then when they get excited and yell at the child there on the news or fired, I'm not going to say what would happen if they say something to their parents. We will be doing a survey for teachers entitled, "Do they find, find strong language, foul, abusive and how often do they hear it from the parents as well as the child?" What is the response of parents when they are informed of their child language? How do we make parents accountable? I have ways of making parents accountable, but this is my observation from visiting schools throughout the year and I'm looking at how these kids are actually scared to go to school. Kids, kids are fighting at the school like animals and no one's controlling it. So I don't care how much money we invest into these schools, until we build up our kids' self-esteem and we make these kids safe, the same problems are gonna continue with education, with their grades low, because if you're not comfortable going to school, how can you learn? And this is something that I wanna propose to, um, city council to start working on and gun control in the schools can stop if we can stop the kids from, um, carrying book bags and maybe go back to carrying their books in their hands like they used to when we was growing up. So these are just a couple suggestions, Councilwoman, that I wanted to present to you.
Thank you.
And I hope that, you know, people understand what I'm trying to say. Because it's more about our kids and the safety and building up our safety self-esteem opposed to a lot of stuff that I'm hearing all around today.
Thank you very much. Huey, you're next? Okay. Does Alicia Dorsey here?
No.
Okay, thanks. All right, your turn.
Hi, I'm Teacher Yalak and I started my career as a literacy intern with an emergency certification in two thousand three and, um, I've been
That she can't hear you.
Okay, so I've been teaching fourth grade for like ten years now at Huey and over the years, I've saw that Huey, um, had once been a K to six and then it was a K to eight and then it was an Edison-run school and then it was back to a district-run school. And I just, um, I really, um, feel like the people, the families in that community have been promised like so many different things by so many different entities over the years that they really ought to get a chance to vote about these, um, charter conversions. I believe in public education, um, and that's why I started teaching. I, I graduated from a public high school here in Philly and, um, I, I know that they can, uh, grow and thrive and produce positive outcomes, but, uh, I think the, the community school idea is a really good one. I think that Huey would make an excellent candidate. It has a lot of the components already in place through their partnership with Penn, University of Sciences, um, WePAC. Um, nobody's reached out to AARP yet, but there's that. And, you know, we finally have computers in all the classrooms, so special ed kids can finally get on Lexia. We, uh, finally have a core group of teachers that are committed to teaching at the school instead of this high turnover rate of principals and teachers I've seen over the years. And when we came in September, we had no idea this was gonna be, um, become a charter. We, 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 we came in September and they told us there weren't gonna be any new books, there was no principal. We didn't have the specialist teachers and the teachers just made up a leadership team and we went out into the community and we reached out to parents, we went door to door welcoming students and we came up with a vision for the school. And it just seems like we're getting the rug pulled out from under us as we just, we, we really didn't have a chance to, to, um, really implement all of the plans we wanted, you know? And, um, you know, like, we just had our first PTA meeting, it's the first PTA of Huey ever. And, um, I think, uh, the school climate right now is the best that it's been ever since the whole time I was there. And, uh, I would really just wanna try and save the school as a public school.
Thank you, so do we. I was surprised because the principal keeps moving, how, um, and it's right across from a wonderful park. I remember when they had graduations in the Friends of Malcolm X Park, so we'll agree with you and we're happy to struggle with you in this regard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to testify? Let me thank you all very much. We will recess, recess this hearing subject to the call of the chair. God bless you all, thank you. Thank you.